Please, please. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, may we have a roll call?
Councilmember Tarnay?
Here.
Councilmember Sherillian?
Here.
Councilmember Haworth?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin?
Here.
Mayor Lesser?
Here. Move on to our ceremonial calendar, and the first item is a presentation of a proclamation declaring September this month as National Preparedness Month, and I'd like to call down our fire chief, Jesse Alexander. And our emergency preparedness administrator, Ashley Hopson. Please. One, speak for everyone on stage. We actually have a certificate in all colleagues, so. Chief, thank you, welcome.
Thank you. So I'm first going to turn it over to our Ashley Hopson, which is our emergency preparedness administrator for the city.
Good evening, everyone. Since it is Emergency Preparedness Month, I just wanted to go ahead and remind everyone that we do have a Preparedness Fair September 13th. It will be in the back of our fire station, so please come. We're welcoming everyone. We're going to have some great activities for the children, and also it'll be a great time for you to go ahead and prepare a safety kit, not just for yourself, sometimes your pets as well. You never realize food, medicine for them, and also yourself. Just get everything together. So I hope to see everyone there. Oh, sorry. And then also for our alert South Bay. I would like for everyone to sign up. This is something for you to get disasters. I use it for road closures. It's great for everyone to just go ahead, acknowledge, and get just the text messages.
So I want to thank Mayor, councilmembers, for this recognition of Emergency Preparedness Month. The fact is, ultimately, preparedness is a shared responsibility. Having Emergency Preparedness Month gives us the opportunity to emphasize key components for taking care of our family, protecting our neighbors, and basically making the community more resilient, and emphasizing those key components so that we are prepared and ready for the next event, whether it's natural, man-made, or technological. And another way of following up on that is through local initiatives or resources provided to the community during this month. So you saw a couple opportunities that we have, but in addition to that, I'd like to really encourage the community to visit the fire department's website, and under there is the Emergency Preparedness tab that outlines a wide variety of items for you to be prepared at, such as heat resilience, preparing an emergency kit, preparing emergency plans, all those components that will help you be prepared for the next emergency. In addition, we have coming up on October 16th, at 10:16, is our Great Shakeout, which is the International Shakeout Day, and there is videos to, you can sign up, and also prepare yourself for that upcoming event. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. We actually have a proclamation for you to post proudly at the station, or wherever you choose to. It has multiple whereas's, but the bottom line for our community is just, this month is an opportunity to remind us that we all need to be prepared for emergencies that can arise where we work, where we live, where we play, and that's what is in the proclamation, because that's part of the whole idea of National Preparedness Month. So with that, we feel very, well, very lucky to have you here and welcome, Ashley, because I understand you're only recently in your position, so I'm pleased to have you here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. So can we get a picture? Colleagues, we have another ceremonial, a second ceremonial, and that is a presentation of certificates of recognition to Lily Shear and Simon Uslander as the 2025 winners of the Chamber of Commerce Young Entrepreneurs Academy. And what I'd like to do is we'll call them down, but I'm going to tell you a little bit about what this program is, and then we're going to talk to our, the winners, and then for those that might be interested in this program, where you can learn a little bit more. So first, come on down, welcome. And Rachel, do you want to come down too, and identify yourself for the audience, besides the shirt, which is sort of self-identifying?
Representing, Ro should be here as well. My name is Rachel Thomas. I've been the instructor for the YEA program for the past 10 years, and Ro is my teaching partner.
And I've been with the program for five years, and I'm the cheering squad. It is a wonderful program.
So real quick, for those who might not be familiar with what the program is, it's a national hands-on program for students in the 6th through 12th grades to learn about entrepreneurship. It's a 24-week program over which students conceive, plan, and launch their own businesses. They engage with mentors, hear from business leaders, and tour local businesses. The program culminates in a former formal, excuse me, investors panel, kind of like the Shark Tank, which many of you may have seen, where students pitch their businesses to local investors, compete for real startup funding, and have an opportunity to compete in a national competition among other finalists. In the interest of full disclosure, I should share that I was on that investor panel this year. Our Mayor Pro Tem, where are you, where are you going?
There he is.
There he is. He was on the panel, I think, last year, is that right? And it's a wonderful, wonderful community opportunity for students. So why don't I introduce Lily, as well as Simon, maybe ask them to, just to briefly describe what their projects were.
Hi, I'm Lily, and my project was padded volleyball shorts with removable hip padding to prevent hip injury when diving for the ball. And here's my product.
So Martha, I was going to ask you, what did you learn through this process of developing your proposal and making your pitch? How would you respond?
Um, I learned a lot of trial and error, because when I thought something would work, I ended up testing it out, and it didn't work. So I had to find ways to make the product the best it could be while still making it comfortable, flashy, and removable.
Great. Now, can someone purchase this anytime soon, or might you be focusing on your studies right about now?
Um, well, I'm, I'm working with an attorney for a patent, and I am, like, finishing details with a supplier.
Fantastic, great. Simon, why don't you describe a little bit, excuse me for crossing over, tell us a little bit about your, your project.
So my name's Simon Uslander. I'm a sophomore at Miracosta, and my product is the NIF Strip, which is essentially a magnetic bag closer that is ecologically friendly and more efficient than traditional wasteful storage solutions such as Ziploc's and Tupperware.
And what did you learn through your journey?
I learned the importance of having a valuable community that supports you when you're taking on a big project. I'd like to shout out Ms. Shriner and Ms. Rachel, or Ms. Thomas, who are great teachers, but also having good friends that give you advice, and parents that help you throughout the journey, and a crew of people online and in person giving you feedback. I think that that is kind of a really important message to have, like, to have a community around you at all times.
I don't know about you, but do you see how persuasive this young entrepreneur can be? Of course, I'm not sure if we can buy the NIF Strips anywhere near us yet, but I presume you're focusing on your academics now, right?
I have plans in the second semester to looking to going into the Hometown Fair and local farmers' markets, but that might be delayed a little just in the patent process, yeah.
Fantastic. So maybe some brief words from the adult leaders that make this program possible, and then we're going to provide information for anybody who might be interested in the upcoming class. Rachel?
Thank you. So we're really proud of our students. These, they've done a wonderful job, and it's really our joy to watch them grow throughout the program from the beginning to the end. It's just amazing, and we couldn't do it without the community support as well. We have speakers from local businesses, local leaders, come in and talk to them about various aspects of business. We have mentors who come and meet with each student business and help them through the process of writing the business plan. And so we have so much community support, as well as through the donors, the sponsors, the investors. And so we are really, really fortunate to be here in Manhattan Beach and to be surrounded by such a supportive community. We do have our new class that's starting in October, and I'm, one last little plug, in 10 years, we've had seven students be in the top six in the nation, because we have national, um, winner's circle, yes, it's a national program. Yeah, and so we're very, very proud of our students.
Just adding on just a tiny bit, our sponsors are really, really dear to us. The city is a sponsor, the school district is a sponsor, the chamber is a sponsor, and Connecta is a sponsor, there are more, but those come to mind right away as wonderful, wonderful, supportive groups that help us in more ways than you could imagine. And secondly, we have interviews coming up for students interested in being in our class, and the interviews are on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, September 22, 23, and 24, so they're coming up in the near future, and we have flyers for all of you who want to learn more about our program.
Thank you. Before we get a picture, is there anyone that either of you would like to acknowledge in the audience tonight that may have something to do with your being here tonight?
Um, I'd like to acknowledge my parents, sitting right there. And I would also like to thank Ms. Shriner and Ms. Thomas for this amazing class.
Great. Simon?
I'd like to thank Ms. Shriner and Ms. Thomas, too. You guys were great teachers.
Thank you all, and the deadline for applying for this coming year's program, I'm told, is September 17th, is that right? And for those that might not be able to write this down, the Manhattan Beach Chamber of Commerce website is where one can find any more information about it. Thank you all. Maybe we'll get a picture with our colleague? Here is. A certificate? And? We will now move on to approval of the agenda and waiver of full reading of ordinances. I see there's a motion by Councilmember Franklin, with a second by Councilmember Haworth. Call for the vote.
Technical difficulty. It's not letting me sign in.
Okay, I'll do voice vote. Councilmember Tarnay?
Yes.
Councilmember Sherillian?
Yes.
Councilmember Haworth?
Yep.
Mayor Pro Tem Franklin?
Yes.
Mayor Lesser?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. We'll now move on to city council and community organization announcements of upcoming events for up to one minute per person. Anybody in chamber care to make a community announcement? Please, welcome on.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city council members, city officials, Ted, Bobby Bell, Waste Management Outreach and Recycling Educator. I know I spoke on this a couple of months ago, I believe, but it got brought up again in a neighboring city really close to us, so I thought it would be a good time to remind us, especially with emergency prep going on. Batteries do not belong in the trash can. It, it's absolutely a nightmare. Our ops team calls it a hot load. We call it a truck fire, but this one just happened on Friday. Our trucks have to find an open street to park on, they have to wait for the fire department to show up, then they can dump the load out to put, to have the fire department put it out. This was caused by lithium batteries. A lot of people, how do lithium batteries just start on fire? Our trucks, everybody's trucks, compact, and when it gets squished back, it will snap, it will ignite, and we will have ourselves a fire. So there's multiple pickup locations, you can see on this one, on the next slide, that it actually melted the truck from the inside out. These trucks now run about $650,000, and we now have a bad truck because someone threw a battery into their trash can. We do have battery pickups here in Manhattan Beach, as everybody is aware, here at City Hall, at the Fire Department, at the Jocelyn Center, at the Public Works Yard, and WM runs a school-year-long battery drive at all of our MBUSD schools, there's buckets there, so if you have a child at school, you can just put your batteries in a bag, give them to your child, and they can drop them off in the main office. That's all I got. Wishing you guys all God's blessings.
Great, thank you. Any other members of the public in council chambers that would like to make a community announcement? Hi, Lynn.
Hi, I'm Lynn Gross, and I'm here to announce that the Dolphin Committee of the Roundhouse Aquarium is going to have its free presentation. It's a panel discussion on why do dolphins surf? Now, unfortunately, we haven't been able to get any dolphins to join this panel, but we have four avid surfers, and they are out there with the dolphins, and they're going to give their experiences and give their opinion on this subject. This is going to occur on Wednesday, September 17th. It's free, it's from 6:00 to 7:00 in the evening, and it's going to be right next door at the library. We'll probably find out some things about how people surf from this group also, so we hope to see you there for this event. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Lesser, and councilmembers. My name is Christian Eichenlom. I'm a captain with the Manhattan Beach Police Department. I'd like to invite the community to join us for our next town hall meeting, which will take place on Thursday evening, September 18th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It'll be at the Jocelyn Center, located at 1601 North Valley Drive, 1601 North Valley Drive. We have an exciting presentation in store for everybody, followed by a Q and A at the end with Chief Johnson. Anyone wishing to submit questions can do so at askacop@manhattanbeach.gov. That's askacop@manhattanbeach.gov. Hope to see you there, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Hello, I'm the Community Library Manager for Manhattan Beach, and thank you for advertising that program. I actually was also going to talk to you about that one, too, so I think that'll be a really great event. But some other things that we're doing is next Wednesday, September 10th, we have a program for ages 6 to 12 called Snakes on a Page, where they're going to be making paper snake mosaics and learning about different types of snakes in children's literature. Then the next day, on Thursday, September 11th, at 4:00, we have our Adulting 101 Series. They're going to be making a per, a per zine, so it's like a personal zine. It's a do-it-yourself mini magazine that's reflective of you, and so the activity is going to focus on building confidence and self-esteem for ages 12 through 17. And two weeks ago, we did just relaunch all of our six weeks of Storytime, so we have Storytimes three days a week on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays at 10:15. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other community announcements in chambers? Seeing none, Martha, is there anybody on Zoom?
No request on Zoom.
Okay, in which case, we'll move on to public comments. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on any matter within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council for up to three minutes. Individuals have an opportunity to speak on matters that are on the council agenda this evening, but we ask that if you would speak now, if you wish to speak now, you do not speak again when the item's called. Please, members of the public.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Jill Lampkin, Chamber of Commerce. I just didn't stand up quite fast enough on the community comments, so I actually just wanted to mention that there is an item that is on the PPIC agenda on Thursday that is very near and dear to a lot of the businesses in town, that relates to the new codes regarding food truck policies. And so I just wanted to make sure that the community was aware. I will also make sure that all the businesses are aware, but I wanted to make sure that we all got that message, because it's an important thing for all of our businesses. Thanks.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi, my name is Evelyn Green. I'm a student at Miracosta High School and a founder of Elderly Melodies, which is a youth-led nonprofit dedicated towards improving the emotional and physical well-being of senior citizens through live therapeutic music. Since its creation three years ago, we've expanded to 20 chapters across the U.S., helping over 500 senior citizens. And through my work in facilities right here in the South Bay, including the Kensington and Hermosa Sunrise, I've seen the power of music firsthand. I've been amazed in seeing how music brings connection, relaxation, and memory recall to seniors who may otherwise feel lonely or isolated. A staff member at Hermosa Sunrise told me that experiencing classical music 100% improves seniors' well-being. They love it, and some songs bring back memories. As wonderful as our program is, it is only accessible to the seniors living in senior homes. However, as stated by the senior home staff member, music is important for seniors not living in care homes as well, to keep their mind alive. Manhattan Beach is already a leader in offering a strong older adult program, and I know that our singing programs are well-loved, but I believe that there's an opportunity to extend on that by offering classical or therapeutic music, which engages the brain differently. Research from institutions like the NIH and Alzheimer's Association shows that classical music in particular can stimulate memory, reduce anxiety, and improve problem-solving by activating attentional and emotional networks within the brain. After discussing shortly with you via email, I've had the pleasure of meeting with the Manhattan Beach Senior Advisory Committee to discuss the idea of integrating a classical music program into our older adult portfolio. The response was incredibly supportive, and I have continued communicating with the committee on the potential details and structure of the proposed program. All that remains to put our plan into action is the support of the city with a small amount of kickoff funding. I'm requesting that the city council consider an allocation of $5,000 to fund a three-month pilot program for weekly therapeutic music sessions at the Jocelyn Community Center, led by certified music therapists or classical music group. We would also greatly appreciate the city's support in advertising the program through its senior mailers, newsletter, and social media channels to ensure that every resident has the opportunity to attend. Thank you guys so much for the work that you already do, and I would love to share any more details or answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public in chambers that would care to address council? Seeing none, Martha, is anybody on Zoom?
No request on Zoom.
In which case, I will close public comment and ask my colleagues, are there any public comments or announcements that you care to make? All right. In which case, we'll move on to our consent calendar. Item H, is there a motion? There was some technical issues, are there still? I see a motion by Councilmember, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem Franklin, with a second by Councilmember Haworth, and I presume that is to adopt the consent calendar. Call for the vote.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, no items have been polled, there are no public hearings, in which case, we'll move on to general business, and we'll start with a consideration of an update and next steps regarding the existing memorandum of understanding with the Bay Club Company to construct and operate a aquatic facility with the city.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Patty Matson, Senior Management Analyst in our Management Services Department. The purpose of tonight's item is to provide an update and potential next steps regarding the existing memorandum of understanding, which I'll refer to as the MOU in the presentation, with the Bay Club Company for the construction and operation of an aquatic facility. Over the last year, staff has held several meetings with the Bay Club to determine if a new proposed aquatics facility would be of benefit to the city. Staff has reached a point where we need to return to city council to provide an update on some of the findings and determine if staff should continue to pursue the project. It's important to provide some background regarding Beg Pool, as earlier conversations surrounding it led us to further explore an MOU with Bay Club for a new aquatic facility, which would be at a different location separate from Beg Pool. As identified at previous city council meetings, the Beg Pool facility is reaching the end of its useful life, and significant repairs are required due to its age and level of deterioration. To help inform the city's decisions related to Beg Pool, an aquatics facility survey was conducted in 2022, and the Beg Pool Modernization Study was completed in 2024. Among several of the requests from the community, key input did include requests for more water to serve community needs. As part of the 2022 Aquatics Survey, respondents indicated their interest in a new aquatic center, and results showed that there was community interest. However, the same support did not exist for strategies to fund the needed renovations or new facility at Beg Pool. The strategy with the most support at the time was to increase fees paid by those who use city aquatics and recreation facilities and programs. There was little support for strategies such as increasing local property taxes or local sales tax. On May 7th, 2024, city council received a report regarding the Beg Pool Modernization Study. The report provided two options to modernize the pool with an estimated cost of $27.9 million or $40.3 million, with proposed add-ons at an additional cost of up to $8.9 million. On the lower end, option one was to renovate and modernize the existing pool and support buildings, and would carry an annual operating cost of $800,000. Option two was a proposed new aquatic center that would include the new construction of two pools and support buildings. This option would carry an annual operating cost of $1.8 million. For comparison, Beg Pool's current annual operating costs are approximately $650,000. Due to the high cost of this project, raising fees for users and programs alone, as previously supported by survey respondents, would not cover the costs that are needed to complete the full renovations or construct a new center in a timely manner. After receiving the report regarding the study, city council provided a few direction points to staff. The first being a request to hire a consultant to conduct a poll regarding community priorities for funding Beg Pool upgrades. This was completed via an additional survey done by True North Research in June of 2024 as a part of the research related to ballot measure MMB that established the one-half cent sales tax to fund general city services. Beg Pool did not rank as highly as other possible upgrades or funding priorities in that community survey. This helped to further establish that the modernization of Beg Pool does not have top priority for residents at the moment. Another direction point from council at the May 7th meeting was to research the costs associating, associated with ensuring that Beg Pool remains safe for the next two to three years. Staff has been meeting with MBUSD to obtain quotes for the top three repair priorities. The first repairs to be made will be to the plumbing, and they actually began today. Staff will continue to coordinate with MBUSD regarding the completion of all priority repairs to keep aquatics programs in operation for the next few years. The funding for these repairs includes approximately $825,000 in the fiscal year 2026 CIP, as well as a promised donation of up to $1 million by Bay Club, regardless of whether the new aquatics facility that's identified in the MOU proceeds. It's important to note that the repairs are intended to prolong the life of Beg Pool in the short term, and do not address many facility deficiencies noted in the study, and future equipment failures beyond these repairs could impact operations. With that background in mind, that brings us to the center of what we wanted to discuss today. At the same May 7th meeting, city council provided direction to staff to continue discussions with Bay Club. And then on August 20th, 2024, council approved an MOU with Bay Club regarding their intent to construct and operate a new aquatic facility. Additionally, the MOU included a provision regarding a related project, which was the donation of up to $1 million to partially fund the previously mentioned Beg Pool priority repairs. So this is the proposed project site for the new aquatic facility. It's in the parking lot to the west of Manhattan Country Club. The yellow perimeter outline shows the complete parcel that is owned by the city, and the area in green shows the approximate area where the facility could be constructed. The conceptual designs submitted by Bay Club, which we will show soon, fall within that area, and the city already leases that land to them. Bay Club has already completed three preliminary items regarding exploration of the project, and the first being the Phase 1 environmental site assessment, which is generally a background check on a property to see if there might be any pollution or environmental issues. The Phase 1 report did not recommend the need for a Phase 2, which would have been used to identify any issues in more detail and potential remediation. used to identify any issues in more detail and potential remediation. They've also completed a preliminary title report and provided modified conceptual designs to the city after preliminary meetings with the senior villas identified ingress and egress An important element as to why we wanted to provide this update is to provide points of clarification regarding potential programming at the site. The city's initial request to Bay Club was for the city to have dedicated time at the facility to expand city programming. After conversations, Bay Club has confirmed that while they would work with the city on developing the program experience, all programming and services would be provided by them, similar to how they operate their other aquatics facilities. The program would be developed with revenue generation and operating costs in mind. Bay Club has also confirmed that Manhattan Beach residents would receive priority access for daily use and programs, and this is the key benefit to the city. Currently, the rates of the five local public pools in our area range from $3 to $7 for lap and rec swim. The current suggested resident daily use rate from Bay Club is $15 per use. This user fee is projected to be higher than that of other local pools due to the costs of building the new facility. Final fees would need to be memorialized in the amended lease, and staff may return to council to determine if the city would like to subsidize or partially subsidize the fees for residents. Per the provisions in the MOU, Bay Club would construct two swimming pools, one junior pool and one competition pool. Bay Club has since clarified that the maximum depth they're willing to consider for the small pool is 3 1/2 feet and 6 feet for the large pool. Community input from the Beg Pool Modernization Study did express a preference for a pool that could accommodate water polo. High school competitive water polo would require a pool depth of at least 6 1/2 feet. However, the programming Bay Club chooses may not include activities requiring a pool deeper than 6 feet. Ultimately, a deeper pool could make it more difficult for Bay Club to accommodate multiple types of activities. Bay Club has provided two conceptual designs for the proposed facility. They are identified as Scheme M and Scheme N. Scheme M depicts two pools, while Scheme N depicts one, and the current estimated project cost is $8 to $12 million. It's worth noting that Bay Club, as a private entity, is able to build a facility at this cost, only because they would not be subject to things like prevailing wage where municipalities And so here we have the two schemes. They're both adjacent to the Manhattan Country Club facility. As mentioned, both fall within the area that is already leased to Bay Club, where there are approximately 30 parking spaces. See if I can get the spotlight. So right there, and right over there. A little spotlight. Both concepts maintain the location of the existing driveway to the site, as well as maintain the existing access to the senior villas. In addition to the pools, each scheme includes designs to accommodate a bathhouse, which typically features restrooms, changing rooms, et cetera, and final designs would be determined at a later date. Bay Club has indicated that they have a spending threshold that may ultimately stop the project if things become cost prohibitive. While Bay Club has confirmed that they would be covering the costs of the items I'm about to go over, these items or any items identified further along in the review process could contribute to their overall threshold. Staff has identified the following items with financial impacts for Bay Club. A parking study would be required, as the existing parking lot is already heavily utilized, and future parking demand generated by a facility is likely to exceed the available capacity, particularly where we account for the approximately 30 lost spaces. Regarding entitlements, Bay Club would need to apply for a Plan Development Plan Amendment to change the current land use allowance, as well as conduct an environmental review pursuant to CEQA. An amended lease and updated MOU would also need to be addressed. A retaining wall may also be required at the project site pending final design specifications, and this is an additional construction element that could increase project costs. And finally, if the Plan Development Plan Amendment is approved, the next step in the process would be the preparation and submittal of building plans. And then upon approval of the building plans, building permits would then be issued. Another item for consideration is that two monitoring wells have been identified at the potential project site. These wells observe and assess groundwater and are managed by Honeywell. In conversations with Honeywell, they have confirmed that the wells can be relocated at their own expense. If the project moves forward, staff would coordinate with Honeywell to decommission the current wells and relocate them after approval by the California Regional Water Quality Control Board and permits from the LA County Department of Public Health are issued. The relocation is estimated to take a few weeks to complete and may have impacts to parking and field access depending on those new locations, but final downtime would be determined if the project progresses. Finally, we've identified some preliminary benefits and drawbacks for the project after staff's initial review. Regarding benefits, residents would gain a new aquatics option to meet identified community needs with priority access, and the city would not be responsible for construction or operating costs related to the project, and a new aquatics facility could decrease the demand on Beg Pool. Some of the potential identified drawbacks, the city would not be in control of programming at the site, as Bay Club is the operator, and the suggested user fee is higher than current public pool rates. However, subsidies could be discussed at a certain point, and potential parking challenges may arise due to current and expected demand. If staff is directed to continue to move forward, we anticipate the following next steps. Update the existing MOU if required to reflect the next phase of the project. Conduct a parking study to assess current and projected parking demand at the proposed site and surrounding area. Bay Club will submit the Plan Development Plan Amendment, other applicable entitlements, and initiate the required CEQA review. We'll begin discussions related to lease terms. The potential relocation of the monitoring wells could occur, and we would complete additional public outreach as needed. Additionally, if City Council decides to move forward, council also has the option to direct staff to get feedback from the Parks and Recreation Commission. And our recommendation for this evening is that City Council discuss and provide direction whether the city should continue to proceed with efforts to advance the project based off of the updates provided. That concludes the presentation, but I do want to mention that this report and review of this project has been a collective effort across many departments, including Parks and Recreation, Community Development, Public Works, Finance and Management Services. Fellow staff members and myself are available for questions, and we also have representatives from the Bay Club here as well. We have President and CEO of the Bay Club Company, Matthew Stevens; EVP of Construction and Development of SoCal, Pete Jones; and EVP of Manhattan Beach Country Club, Ann Morton. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. That was a very complete, yet focused, report and very helpful. Counsel, questions initially for staff?
I have a quick one. Counselmember.
A quick one, yeah, thank you. Patty, well done. So the difference between the two proposed, the larger pool is not going to be getting smaller to put the smaller pool there, correct?
That one remains the same size in both schemes.
So they're just kind of relocating the positioning of the pools, as well as the showers or the area?
Yes, and then in Scheme M, the bathhouse and administrative area, that's a little bit larger as well compared to Scheme N.
Gotcha. I know, that's perfect. Thank you.
Other questions? Counselmember Tornay?
Thank you, Patty. I had a question on, let's see, the drawings on page that shows the proposed project site with the, on slide 10. Is that beating into half a Village soccer field right there? Is that?
No, if you're not touching the soccer field.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
Counselmember, do you have questions? Before I go. Mayor Protam.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you, Patty and team. This has answered a lot of questions, and so we're glad that you got it memorialized in a PowerPoint and a staff report. Heard from residents about the $15 estimated use fee. What are residents paying now? Let's just say you want to go there and you want to do some swimming in the morning. It doesn't matter how much time you spend, right? It's one fee that lets you into the.
For this proposed facility, yeah, it would be the one fee, the $15, but then, oh, sorry, for Bay Club. That's what I was talking about.
Yeah.
Were you speaking about Bay Club?
No, actually, well, I wanted to confirm that it's one use fee there, but what do we do now at Beg Pool?
Beg Pool. So that ranges from $3 to $7, I believe, per use, yeah.
Okay, $3 to $7. Have they been adjusted at all in the last, has the study's been done, like with other departments, that have these fees been assessed and increased or decreased?
I am not aware.
We can look into that and get back to you.
Okay. All right. Can the, the thing that's concerning me is that the Bay Club staff, which I'm sure they're fine, they do a good job there, but are they either adequately trained, certified to do the types of programming that we do now with our Parks and Recreation programs at Beg Pool?
That would be an appropriate question to pose to Bay Club when you invite them to the podium.
Oh, okay. Oh, so they're going to, they're going to speak here?
They can speak during public.
Oh, okay, great.
During public comment.
Thank you. Let me see. The, just to confirm the operating costs, the projected operating costs of both, I'm sorry, did we call it M and N, the two different, Scheme M and Scheme N? Are they both the 100, you know, or $1.8 million a year?
That was actually for Beg Pool, for the renovation or the new build at Beg Pool, but the Scheme M and N, we don't actually have those operating costs at this time.
Okay.
That would be from Bay Club.
Bay Club folks have that?
They might.
Okay. All right. And do we know at Beg, what percentage of the users are residents and non-residents? Do we have a feel for that at all?
Do we happen to know?
Since it will be only for Manhattan Beach residents that could use it, right?
For Bay Club?
For the new.
It would be the residents and Bay Club members.
Residents and Bay Club members.
So it does vary by activity. It averages 50%, and if you'd like to dig into some more of those details by programs, Jesus Sandoval can cover that.
Okay.
For different program activities and the ranges of residents.
Yeah.
Good evening, Jesus Sandoval, Senior Recreation Supervisor. Yes, just like Mark Lehman mentioned, it varies by program. For example, private swim lessons, I always said probably 99% are all Manhattan Beach residents. Where more like recreational swim or lap swimming, it would say probably about between 50 and 80% are Manhattan Beach residents.
Okay. Would it be able to pull that information later on, I mean, in really good detail, so we know how, as we do projections of revenue and the like for any proposed?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't expect you to have it now, but I just wanted to know if we can get that information.
Of course. Yeah, we can definitely give you accurate numbers.
Okay.
Just briefly, if I could add to that again, because of the resident registration priorities, they fill almost immediately, and that's why it is 90, 95% for most activities that you can register for in advance.
Right.
Versus a rec swim where you can drop in.
And do we have an idea of the numbers? I mean, we can get that, right?
Absolutely, we can. We can get those numbers for you.
And as far as Scheme M, for example, is that just like a duplicate of the pool at Beg Pool? Six or seven lanes and the depth, well, the depth of Beg is, what, 3 1/2 feet? Yeah, but as far as the lanes?
Correct, I believe, yes. Beg Pool is about 3 1/2 to 4 feet, and the one they're proposing, I believe, the shallow pool, it's, I think it's, it's called by yards, but I think it's average, I would say like four lanes, but obviously they're not putting lanes. But the other one, it's six lanes, 25 yards, what they're proposing, but it will be a deep pool.
Okay.
Or compared to Beg Pool, it's a shallow.
So that's an M, right? Or is it, so the pools in both M and N are the same size, the larger pool?
Yes, the larger pool is the same size.
Okay.
Same square footage.
And just the relationship to Beg Pool, are they bigger? I mean, because Beg Pool is, forgive me, the number of lanes, but I know it's 25 yards.
They would, this would also be a 25-yard pool.
These would be 25 yards, okay.
Yeah.
And then how many lanes?
Lanes, I'm not sure. That could be something that Bay Club could respond to.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, that's all for now. Thank you.
Counselmember Shering, did you have a follow?
I did, real quickly, if we go to slide 10, just had it up. The 30 spaces that we're going to be losing, what are those 30 spaces being used for now?
Although Bay Club has a lease with the city for those spaces, it's not an exclusive lease, so it could be utilized by Bay Club members, it could be utilized by anyone who's using the Village soccer field as well.
So being non-exclusive, it's almost like taking 30 spaces away.
Correct.
Okay. And the second question is, the timeline, I guess I would have liked to see a timeline of, you know, once, once you get your direction as far as how long it would take to complete this project. And just to understand, Phase 1, page 11 on the slides, so Phase 1, so for the last year since we kicked this off, year-plus, so we've done an environmental report, a title report, and solved an ingress and egress issue with the villas. Have we done anything else in that year? Or I guess I'm trying to understand if what we did on the completed section, was that a year's worth of work?
Yes.
Or are we?
We went through the multiple iterations of the conceptual plans that were evaluated by staff and then returned to the Bay Club and redeveloped, so what you're seeing is the final version. And we've been connecting with Honeywell, understanding what we would have to do with the monitoring well situation. We've been meeting regularly with the Bay Club to understand what the programming would be and to uncover essentially all of the issues that Patty brought forward to the council today that would have to be addressed at some point if the council wanted to move forward. Essentially, all of the efforts have led to this conclusion and summary of what, what would we have to do to move forward? What are the impediments along the way? What could be the cost restrictions that we face, including the retaining wall, if we were to move forward with this? That could potentially halt the project.
Okay, that's all I have for now.
Patty, over the last three years, we had a great deal of community engagement as to what type of needs we have in our community. So the questions I'm about to ask sort of go to what I recall hearing from both our consultant, as well as members of the community. The maximum depth that the Bay Club is willing to construct for a pool is 6 feet?
6, yeah.
Why? And is that something that is technically based, or is that something based on cost? Or do we not know why they've established that?
I would also direct that question to Bay Club, but it is my understanding that it has to do with costs, because at some point, they will be reaching an upper limit of cost expenditures that would no longer make it profitable for them to pursue the venture.
The rub, of course, is that through our community meetings, I thought, I heard, that 6.5 feet, 6 1/2 feet, as you mentioned in your report, is required for water polo and for many other aquatic sports, correct? Let's also talk about length. Mayor Protam Franklin focused on the length of 25 yards, but for any sort of competition pool, it's by meters, and I've forgotten what the minimum length is.
For competition?
Yes, so the swimming, it is 25 yards, so that would definitely suffice for the water polo. I am not 100%, but I believe it's about 28 or 30 meters. I am not 100%, but I believe it's about 30, 28 or 30 meters. And with the goals, depending on how it's set up, the goals and stuff, that's why we, on the previous, we recommended 35 meters for Beg Pool. But, so it could potentially, I don't know about a competition, but it would suffice for like a regular game, stuff like that, but not actual, like a water polo competition.
Let me ask about costs. We have a budget that's estimated by the Bay Club of eight to 12 million. So, let's just say hypothetically that expenditures prove to be a little higher. Who's responsible for the delta there? Or is that to be subject to discussions? Is that something that the city is automatically obligated? Where are we at present in those discussions?
We have not gotten that far, Mayor, in those discussions. And if, if we were directed to move forward, there would have to be a lot more work done to be able to determine what those costs are and how definitive those costs are.
Let's talk about a parking study. That would be paid for or undertaken by whom? By the city or by Bay?
By Bay Club.
All right. And that would capture the needs for the Village Field users and their families, as well as the Manhattan Village residents?
Yes.
Council, a number of years ago, explored a potential for a hotel at that location, and we were told at that time that stack parking could be billed relatively inexpensively, particularly at the northwest side, because of course, there's a grade differential there. Would that necessarily be part of a parking study, or is that premature? Because we'd need to see what our needs are first.
I can address that. So, the parking study would initially evaluate what the new demand would be, that would be added as a result of the facility, and the deficit that they would be gaining, for lack of a better term, and what opportunities there would be potentially for shared parking before having to involve construction of a new facility.
In the ideal world, perhaps there'd be a circle there for a drop-off, particularly for those using the field as well as the pool. That would all come later after the parking study?
Correct.
Okay. I have more questions, but I see colleagues have questions too. Councilmember Howard, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Patty. That was a wonderful report. And hopefully, I'm asking questions that we can answer, or hopefully, we're keeping track, so during public comments, we could ask Bay Club. So, just, I'm trying to clarify, because I think there's, it's a, it's a little bit nuanced. The Bay Club is not going to be running any of our programs at the site, correct?
They would ultimately be in control of what programming they would like.
Right.
We can offer program experience suggestions.
We can offer suggestions, but the point of this club, the club, the point of the pool, this water addition, I mean, is to serve the Bay Club, which, I mean, if they're building it, that is there, it's, they have a lot of need. They need more water. And so, and I, I kind of want us to understand this. This is not them saying that they're building a community pool for us, but they are saying, hey, you guys have needs, we want to help you out, you can have master swimming here if we don't have enough people using it, correct? Is that Madam City Attorney, or a team manager, what do I call you?
You promoted me to City Attorney.
Yeah. Is that a promotion, though? I don't know.
Bay Club would develop the programming similar to how their other pools operate today. However, with a little caveat there, that they would consult with us on that programming.
Okay.
And so, they would open up the registration for those programs, and our residents would get priority to sign up for those programs.
If there was extra space. They wouldn't get priority over Bay Club programs?
They would.
Oh, they would? Okay, that's, okay. All right. And the operating costs, I think it was, well, I know the mayor asked about what if the costs of construction go up, but also somebody asked about operating costs, but that is being proposed to be carried by the Bay Club.
Correct.
Which is the thing that, you know, so that's, they're not running our programs, they're making it accessible, but they're bearing all the operational costs. And so, there's a mention of subsidizing. So, if the Bay Club says, hey, if you're not a Bay Club member, and you want to do this aerobic water aquatics or water aerobics or whatever, water aquatics, that's pretty redundant. Water aerobics, it's $15, but we could, and I'm not saying we should, but we could say, you know what? We now have money in our budget because we're not running certain programs, or we're not doing certain upkeep, or we're not spending $40 million. We could subsidize so that residents could get whatever amount we determine, but if we wanted to make it so that residents are only paying $7 for use, we could possibly do that. Now, I understand, and I wouldn't suggest that we make that decision today, but that is something we could do, correct?
That is correct.
And then the last question I have, I have so many, but, will they also be providing, like their lease, it's their pool, but they're doing a long-term land lease for this? So, we would be getting lease payments as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're getting lease payments, we don't pay for upkeep or maintenance, and, I mean, it, we really shouldn't be thinking of it as our pool. You know, they're not building our pool for us, but they're offering an ability. So, we could, we could go through all this, and I'm not, this is a process question, maybe, but this may not be, when I make my decision, I could make this based on, this is not solving my community aquatics needs, but we are also making this decision whether they have the right or ability, like, we want them to proceed with a pool, correct? I mean, they don't already have the ability, I mean, we have to grant them that, correct?
That, that's correct, through the Plan Development Amendment process.
Right.
Which they would have to pursue if the council gave the direction to move forward.
Right. So, if, if that's also one of the options tonight, if we say, well, you know, we're not, we can direct staff to do that, so they could go ahead with building their pool. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Tony, are you done?
Thank you for asking. I'm done.
Sorry. I thought that it was a train.
Just a couple of brief questions. I know that this is probably really premature, but do we know if there will be a big increase? I know that it's a $15 per use charge for drop-ins, or, but what about classes, like swim lessons and whatever other programming that they're going to offer? Is it going to be significantly more, 20%, 30%, 40%? If you don't have the answer, maybe they can help us with that. And then, the other question I have, again, is probably for Bay Club folks when, when they come down, but in the discussions regarding the depth for water polo, because that's something that I think we have a significant need for, and, and so, is it, was it a non-starter? Like, there is not a circumstance where they would be increasing it, or were there discussions regarding how can we get to that depth? What additional numbers can be considered?
Six feet was their maximum that they provided. However, it could be open to conversation. And then, as far as the program costs go, we did not get that far in discussions to determine what those program costs might look like.
Thank you.
Mayor Perotam Franklin?
Yes, so I just want to clarify, goes on slide 12, can you bring that up, please?
Yes.
It says, "All programming and services will be provided directly by Bay Club and not the city?"
Yes.
So, our Parks and Recreation people are not going to be in the pool doing the instruction?
Correct.
It's just going to be the, the Bay Club folks? And they have, and Bay Club will have control over the revenue streams, operating costs, and scheduling?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. I didn't, that isn't quite what I heard, but that's clear. So, there's something in there, it says, "All Bay Club members." And does that include the Bay Club in El Segundo?
Yes, yes.
It does?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not only the Bay Club in, directly adjacent, it's the Bay Club that's off of Rosecrans?
Yes.
Okay. How about, is there a Bay Club in Redondo Beach?
I'm not aware.
Yes, there is.
Okay, so those members would have an option to come to Manhattan Beach?
Our initial discussions with the Bay Club is that it would be open to their members in general, Bay Club members in general, not just Manhattan Country Club members.
Okay, gotcha. And do the members of the Country Club, do they have the same programming? In other words, will there, will there be some, this is maybe best for them, projected use of the families there coming over to the pool if their family pool is, you know, crowded or things like that? So, they could come over to it and use it?
That is best posed to the Bay Club as well. Our understanding is that with proposed changes to the Bay Club that are currently in process but not approved, they don't anticipate that there will be a, a great need for their Manhattan Country Club members to use the aquatics facility, but that could change.
Okay. All right. The parking study has not been done, right? Yeah, we're losing 30 spaces from there. And we'll find out from them about the operating costs, and, and they can give projections of how many of their members might be coming over and using it. Okay. Thank you. That's all for now.
I just want to follow up on a question by Mayor Perotam Franklin, which of course we'll ask of the Bay Club management. And that is, if there's a conflict of city residents and city programming, particularly with older adults, let's say, how is staff understanding that Bay Club would prioritize usage of residents, programming that we might ordinarily want to offer if it was under our staff prerogative, versus opening up the pool, which would be under their management, to all of their members at their various locations?
Sorry. The, they have stated that they will give priority access to our residents. We haven't quite discussed the lead time on, on those types of aspects, like what that lead time would actually be for priority access. And I think I missed the other part of your question, if you would...
We can ask the Bay Club more in detail. Thank you. Councilmember Howard?
And I would encourage us when we ask the Bay Club, because I, I'm hearing a couple different understandings of what's being proposed. And so, I want to be sure we're asking the question that satisfies us all with the answers. But my understanding is they have a need for more water for their members, for their classes and programming. And so, if they have a block of time that is not programmed, they may ask our Parks and Rec Department for a suggestion, or they may not. So, again, I want to, that, that's my understanding of it. And so, you know, I keep hearing, it's, well, what, would they consult? Would they have our, tell our people what to teach? Our people are in there going to be teaching, is my understanding. I think we need to really clear, and that's okay. I just, it's not a, I'm not trying to put a judgment on that, I just want us to understand that. And again, the operating costs that Councilmember Franklin, again, I think they're saying they're going to bear all those, but we should confirm. But when they say priority access, maybe they can define that. To me, it's that, my understanding, which could be wrong, is that Bay Club members from wherever, if they've signed up for water aerobics class, they get it, and then if there's leftover spots, we get it. So, I want to, I would like them to answer that, because I don't think they're saying, oh, no, if there's a water aerobics class, first it's Manhattan Beach residents, then Bay Club. So, we need, that's what we need to clarify. So, just so Bay Club provides us with clear answers, that's what I'm trying to nail down. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? If not, colleagues, what I would suggest is allow a representative of the Bay Club to come down and perhaps make a statement of up to, up to three minutes, and then be available for five minutes?
I mean, yeah, just to answer our, because we threw out a lot of questions.
An opening statement of up to five minutes, and then perhaps some questions, and then we'll open it up for public comment, but I think your comments and answers would be helpful to our discussion. Welcome.
Absolutely. Well, first of all, thank you, Mayor Lesser, Mayor Proterm Franklin, City Council, City Staff. You know, we very much have enjoyed this last 12 months working with the, the city team. We probably had a half a dozen in detail meetings with six or seven different departments sort of working this out. My name is Matthew Stevens, I'm the president and CEO of Bay Clubs. And how this came about is that, you know, the Beg Pool presentation came out, and there was a $28 million and a $40 million bill, plus an operating cost. And we've had a really good relationship with the city, and we sort of tapped them on the shoulder and said, hey, you want us to take a look? Is there a way to do this where the city could end up with the pool that they're looking for without any out-of-pocket costs, with no operating costs, and finding sort of a win-win? And so, that's how the conversation started, and we've been working on that. So, to sort of try to clarify some of the questions. This is not a, this is being proposed as a City of Manhattan Beach Aquatic Center, with the City of Manhattan Beach residents having first priority and Bay Club members having second priority. And so, similar to the, the staff saying that 99% of the lessons sell out and it's Manhattan Beach residents, that's what would happen here, is the Manhattan Beach residents. If there's overflow, then it's available for Bay Club members to handle that overflow and be able to fill in from that perspective. Yes, we have a club in El Segundo, we have a club in Redondo Beach, we have a club in Santa Monica. Those members can come here and swim, but the pre, the, the Manhattan Beach residents will have the preferred place just like Beg Pool. I think the staff came up and said 50 to 70% of the swimming at Beg Pool is done by Manhattan Beach residents, the rest of them are from Redondo Beach, Hermosa Beach, et cetera. Difference here is, they'll also, there'll be Bay Club members that could swim there, and that's where our members are from, Manhattan Beach, Hermosa Beach, Redondo Beach, El Segundo areas. Trying to address some other questions. Cost-wise, I think we've said, for right now, if you guys, if the council sees fit for us to continue to work with the staff, we've sort of put a $12 million number out there to say, you know, that's sort of our marker for right now to just test the waters as we go to this next level of expense with the different reports that we have to do. If, if we hit a bogey that's way beyond that, we'll put a stop sign up, and no harm, no foul. You know, we are not looking to come to the City of Manhattan Beach for N D funding. So, there's not a, well, if you want us to continue, you have to kick in five or 10 or $15 million. We're not intending that. As far as operating costs, the assumption is the operating costs are 100% of ours. And that's where the cost for the $15 per visit comes from, right? The Beg Pool is at four, three to $7, but it has been renovated, it's got a $40 million tag sitting out there, plus a $1.8 million operating cost. We're saying, okay, it might cost a little bit more per visit, but it wouldn't cost the City of Manhattan Beach anything, it would be all funded by Bay Club. And so, that's sort of the proposal, the win-win that we've been trying to bring forward. We've had an amazing relationship with the City of Manhattan Beach, we're one of the big promoters behind Ed Foundation and hosts the annual event. We're so thankful for being allowed to, to do business in the City of Manhattan Beach. It's also why we've put up a million dollars to help with the solution for Beg Pool, because I think at the end of the day, we need to give back. We've got Manhattan Country Club, which we're so thankful being able to operate, we've got our El Segundo location, which is right across the street of Rosecrans, we've got a great location, Redondo Beach, and this community has been fantastic to us. So, we come with good intentions, trying to find a balance. I think the last one would be the programming, which is, the, the concept was, Wiseburn was the, was the connector in El Segundo, but that money was all donated. And so, they raised all that through donation. And so, therefore, the costs and the, the, the programming was with the City of El Segundo. In this case, this is all our money. And so, we're basically saying, the City of Manhattan Beach residents will have first access to all the programming. We will mirror the programming of the, of what you ha, of what you want. So, you want seniors aquatics, we can put that in an MOU. We can put all of the different programming in the lease agreement that you want, but it would be executed by Bay Club. We can agree on costs, just like the daily visit, but it would be executed by Bay Club, because it would be paid for and owned by Bay Club.
Great. Thank you.
Hopefully, that helps a little bit.
It helps. I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues in order for questions, but first and foremost, thank you. Thank you for, over the last 12 months, exploring options with our city staff. Obviously, we have been through quite a process that led to these very expensive potential capital... capital costs and operating costs to replace our current community pool. But I think all of us have some questions about the current arrangement.
All good.
So I'll start with Councilmember Tarnay.
Thank you. On the pool depth that we're discussing, I know that Bay Club is offering to do to the depth of six feet, but water polo for that use, we need 6.5. What would it take to get us to the 6.5 number?
Yeah, for right now, we've been having discussions about the programming and how much extra programming is either created or excluded based on the depth. The deeper the pool, the less it can be used for other things. So if you want recreational swimming, and it's 85 degrees out, like you see at Bag Pool, and a lot of people and families come, when you have an extremely deep section, that makes it more difficult. And so therefore, that would rule out that use. Right now, I believe what we have researched is, we would only not be able to do high school actual matches for water polo is the one thing that the depth is sort of encroaching on as part of that process. So we're fine working with the staff to understand, okay, if you have it five feet deep, here's what you can do, here's what you can't do. If you have it six foot deep, here's what you can do, where you can't do. If you go to seven feet, here's what you can do, here's what you can't do. And make a little bit more clarification on that on the next time we come to the discussion. I think the question was asked is, is there flexibility? Yeah, there's flexibility, but we also wanted to let everybody know that the goal would be is to make sure the pool is used the most. And if we make it an accommodation for water polo, but that rules out a lot of use for Manhattan Beach residents, because the pool is too deep in a certain section, we will give you our recommendation based on that. Does that make sense?
Yes, but would that scenario also exist if we did, we went with the two-pool option? Because for family swim or for water aerobics, theoretically, we'd be able to use the shallower pool, and then have the deeper pool for more competitive swim and more competitive water sports.
Yeah, I think it's fair to say, it's a great question. Let us do more work on it and come back to you with, if you agree to allow us to continue to explore the opportunity, we'll be glad to do more work on this and come back to you with the pros and cons on one pool, two pools, what's the depth of it? If it is two pools, why do we think why we think? And we can have a good conversation. What I would say is the city staff has been amazing. In every conversation, it's a fantastic collaboration with them as we talk through these different things. And we feel very comfortable having a great conversation with them about this.
Great. Thank you. And then, and another area, I understand that you have this partnership with other cities, and you manage pools in other cities as well, similar, if we were to proceed down this line, there are other cities that you work with and manage their pools as well?
Well, I would say that Pete Jones, who's behind me, who's the head of construction and development for us in Southern California, he's the founder of Bay Club back in 1977. And I am in my 40th year in this industry. So between the two of us, over our careers, we've probably had a half a dozen or more of these situations around the United States that we've done something like this. This is unique in its own situation, but yes, we have done this in Minneapolis, Minnesota, and Atlanta, Georgia, and Fort Lauderdale, Florida, and various cities around the country. Between the two of us, we have, we're both getting older, so we're, you know, approaching 100 years of knowledge.
Thank you. I'm asking this because in those situations, in those markets, if there is a conflict between, say, a resident who's using the pool, who is the person in charge of resolving? Does it, is it completely taken out of the city control, the city decision-making process, and entirely turned over to Bay Club for those types of conflicts?
You know, I would say that we've got a great experience with that, because we lease the land for the Manhattan Country Club from the City of Manhattan Beach. So it would be the same situation, whereas if something bubbled up to the city, that it wasn't, that there was a conflict, we would work with the city staff, just like we do today. If there's a conflict, we'll have a conversation with something that may be at Manhattan Village, or with the Senior Villas, or whatever it may be. And we've had a really good working relationship with the city through that, so I don't think anything would change.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Proterm Franklin.
Great, yes. Thank you, and I also echo.
Thanks to you.
The thanks, and you put in, you and your team have put in a lot of time with this as well.
You've got good people, so it's easy to work with them, so.
Thank you. We think so. So I tried to get the information, how many lanes there are, and the actual, is it 25?
I think right now, it's six, it's a six-lane, 25-yard pool, which would be a competitive pool for the swim meets. That's fine if that we do. We are not trying to make this into a swim meet location. We're trying to make this into a city pool setup. It was definitely something of importance with the Senior Villas, to not have major competitions here. They were not in favor of that from the noise and the crowds and the things it would take. So we're not really trying to construct this as a competitive, five schools arrive, and we're having a multi-school competitive structure. You're trying to be able to allow people to practice, so it's in the same pool that they would do in a competition.
Right, okay. And would there still be some soundproofing? I know you had some issues with pickleball courts and the noise for the Senior Villas.
Yeah, I think we're my hero from the, we came up with an acoustical curtain. You were our first pilot test on it, so we've done well on that. Yeah, we'll work that through the construction process. There's noise concerns or things, we'll work on the different acoustical curtains and things that we're familiar with. We operate 100 pools from San Diego to Seattle, so this is right in our sweet spot.
So, and it wouldn't, would not be a meet? It would not be a competition location or?
Correct. There's no plans to instruct any stands for, for, that it's not being designed that way. It's meant to be similar to Bag Pool as a service to the community, with Manhattan Beach residents having first dibs, and Bay Club members having second dibs. Now, as you know, we have plenty of Manhattan Beach residents that are our members, so they'll have the same benefit as any other resident.
Right, okay. And then, I'm just thinking, if I really need to know this, about how many Manhattan Beach residents use your El Segundo, and I don't want you to have to give up a, you know, a trade secret or anything, but can you just sort of give us an idea?
Yeah, I think there's two questions sort of thrown out. You know, I'd say City of, Bay Club El Segundo is made up of, more than 60% of the members are from the City of Manhattan Beach. And as you know, City of Manhattan Country Club, I would say 85% of the members, 85% of the members. The other question that was asked was about, will the Country Club members need to have access to this? And yeah, right now, we're proposing to build another pool. Yeah, we're proposing to build a second pool inside of Manhattan Country Club's boundaries that would give them more water, that's completely different than this project. This is its own standalone project, and then we're working through with the city staff a continued renovation of the Country Club that would give us a second pool inside of the boundaries of Manhattan Country Club. And that's more than enough water for us to accommodate the demands that we have there.
Okay. And then, we're always wrestling with parking issues. Can we get some of your thoughts on, you know, since we're losing 30 parking spaces there? Where do you think we could potentially go?
Again, you know, the location was picked because it happens to be currently leased to us. Those, we pay for those parking spaces and lease to Manhattan Country Club. We don't use them and haven't since the Manhattan Village renovations started, I think, back in 2018 or so. And it is, it does make it efficient. Like, we can use all of the services that we have at Manhattan Country Club to help service this, so therefore, it can control the operating costs and keep the costs down to the residents from that. We will do the parking study, and you, the soccer field has a lot of usage on a Saturday and a Sunday. It has minimal usage, you know, up until 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock at nighttime. And so, you know, we'll do the whole study, and we'll come back to everybody and give you our best outcome of how that would be dealt with, and how much usage would happen at the Aquatic Center.
And Mayor Lesser, if you, thank you, Mayor Lesser. Those would be one last question. So we're faced here with some very challenging housing issues throughout. That part of Rosecrans is going to be three different projects with close to maybe 900 units.
Yes.
Sure, individuals, individuals with young kids, things like that. Have you done any projections on what that's going to do to demand, you know, for that swimming facility, since they're literally going to be able to walk there?
Well, if you guys want to give me more land to actually build more pools, I'd be glad to do that for you.
Okay. I mean, I just think, and also to our team, that that has to be looked at as well.
Yeah. Thank you.
Matt, I wanted to circle back to something you just mentioned, and that is, what is the current master plan for more water at the club? And how does this, quote, "separate project" tie into that?
Yeah, they're two completely different projects. The master plan at the Manhattan Country Club calls for us to build a second family pool that we've been working with the staff on. We're in the process of going through all the proper approvals for that setup. This has nothing to do with this. This has, I was approached by the city staff a year and a half ago to ask if I had any solutions, and I gave them a mad scientific idea of this, and it granted to, because we felt like we could attach it to the Country Club's sort of infrastructure, it would be easy for us to staff, because we already have a full staff at Manhattan Country Club. And so this was simply a, look, we've got to do a better job of giving back. We've had a great run in this community, we do well with the Ed Foundation, but this is our expertise, so we're stepping up to try to provide a solution.
So if I could ask, how does this fall within your business plan? Is it just about goodwill, then?
Yeah, I would say that this is not going to be, you know, we will, you know, probably by the end of this year, have 100 clubs across the West Coast. And you know, one of our starting points was here in El Segundo, and, you know, we've, you know, grown to be a very healthy sports, outdoor recreation, active lifestyle company. And so, yeah, we've focused a lot on community give back here. We do a lot now, the Ed Foundation will tell you, we pick up all of the cost for the wine auction, where that was not the case once upon a time. And this is a way for us to give back here in the Manhattan Beach area. Up in San Francisco, we're one of the top two engaged with boys and girls clubs. And so as an overall company, we are picking certain marketplaces and priorities to do a job of doing better at giving back to the community. So I would think this project's going to be a push. You know, it's not going to be a financial windfall for us, but it's, it's good mojo for the relationship that we, you know, hopefully will be here well into the 22nd century, doing business in the beach cities.
Thank you for that. Just last question, and that is, we obviously went through this long process and found that we could not afford to build the pools that met our community needs. And as a result, what you're offering is very helpful. On the other hand, to the extent we identified community needs for water, and those included, for example, a deeper pool, perhaps a longer pool, are you saying that those are subject to further discussions with staff?
Yeah, we're, you know, I think this is where we've gotten to with the proposal, with the give-go, going back and forth with the staff. But if part of your guidance is you want us to do more homework on that process, we'll be glad to do more homework on the process.
Thank you. Councilmember Shuvin.
Thank you, Mayor. And, you know, thank you for your partnership. Appreciate, you know, your complimenting our staff. We have a wonderful staff here. And thank you for supporting the schools and all that you do through that. A couple of things I heard, heard, City of Manhattan Beach Aquatic Center, I hadn't heard that before. You know, I heard the word, you know, use the word mirror our current programming, and also giving priority to Manhattan Beach residents. I think that's my, like, first and foremost concern, is, you know, the residents do get something out of this, and it sounds like they will, because of the things that I've heard you say, and, you know, you guys are the subject matter experts on this. You've built, you said, you've had over 100 pools, and you've done this business model in other places. I guess that would be my only concern, along with having the depth of the pool, of course, and, you know, the appropriate depth that it would accommodate, you know, the majority of what we, what our needs are. But outside of that, you know, again, those would be my concerns, and I'd like to hear more. But the biggest question I have is, how long would something like this take, since you have, you know, you're in the business of this, if we started, you know, groundbreaking to finish?
Yeah, I think Mr. Jones and I were, you know, listening to your comments and questions, and, you know, if we got the proposal to move forward here, we probably have a year of additional approvals, processes, building permits, everything that has to go on, and it would take us a year in construction. So, you know, I think it's fair to say that there's a legitimate chance that we could be open within a 24-month time period.
Okay. Last question. So, you know, we did a pool stu, a study to upgrade bag, and there was a couple of options. I think there's a $20 million and a $40 million option, probably rounding in pretty bad estimates there. How can you build something similar to that for a fraction of the cost? I get why, but I want to hear you say it.
Yeah, there's, there's just the politics, right? This is a private business. We're a private business. We would lease the land, or we are currently leasing this land from the City of Manhattan Beach. And we would go about our typical construction process and approvals that we do in every city that we do, from San Diego to Seattle, and now from Phoenix, all the way up to Boise. And there's just a different process for a private company than a public facility that we would, you know, again, the good news is, we've done this. We have over 100 pools in operation, and we probably have 15 to 20 pools under construction right now. So we're not guesstimating. We know what it costs us to write, to build our pools and how it is. We've done construction in El Segundo and here in City of Manhattan Beach, so we understand the soils, conditions, all of those things. We're, we're very comfortable with sort of our thought process and what the cost structure should be.
Thanks for answering the questions honestly.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. No further questions?
All good.
Which case?
Thanks to see everybody.
Thank you. We'll open this matter up to public comment for those in the chamber first. If those would like to speak on this matter, could please come down? Welcome to your comments.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Wonderful presentation, really enjoyed it, got to a lot of good points. I, my take on it is that we're in a process where we've got a, like, initial MOU, and now we've got another one that we probably have to refine and add more details to. And really, what we're trying to get to this evening is, what additional questions staff needs to answer or try to get to? And I think we had a really good list of them so far. I just want to add two more. I know the Bay Club has been very successful, but I would like to know, you know, if the relationship goes bad at any point in time, if there's any financial issues with the Bay Club, what happens in our relationship in the deal? So I think that's something that would be good to share as well. And the other item that is interesting is that we have, all I heard is that we're going to lose 31 parking spots. Do we lose anything else? What else would we use that property for? 31 spots doesn't seem like something we can't overcome, but is there another deficit that we have as a city in that one? Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Laura Dawson, and I'm speaking because I'm an over-10-year veteran of the water aerobics program. I don't know if the council realizes that that pool is filled four days a week with many, many people who live on limited incomes. And the, the charge of $15 is a very large jump from what's currently being charged. And in addition to the, to those of us who are older on fixed incomes, I also see families coming in who can't afford to belong to the Country Club or to the Bay Club. And they're able to access swimming. And they're able to access swimming lessons for their kids. I, I really want that to stay in everybody's mind. I'd also like to say that as so much has been said about how great the city staff is, and I'm absolutely sure you are, I want to say how great our city pool staff is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and city council members. One thing that struck out to me at the initial conversation was, how are we going to ensure that the programming that's been in place for years for the community members, how are we going to ensure that that continues, that it's not just at the women? I, I don't, I don't mean to say that in a, in a, in a bad or contradictory way, just at the club's discernment of what programs they're going to offer. And I understand that they say they're going to offer the programs that, and that Manhattan Beach residents are going to get first priority, and that's great. I also heard them say that they were going to try to mirror the programs. So if it costs $15 to access the, the pool, but if that, you know, that, that does seem like a stretch for many of our families who can't, and seniors who can't quite maybe manage that, so that's disappointment. If they're going four days a week to water aerobics, that's $60 a week that they have to pay for that programming. The second, the question I didn't hear addressed was, if the, how much the program is going to cost offered, are they going to mirror Manhattan Beach rec prices? Or are they going to be, what are those prices going to be for the families on top of the, you know, the $15 for free use? If somebody's using it for water aerobics and it's a class offered by some teacher from the Bay Club, is that going to, and I don't know the prices, so I'm making numbers up, but is that going to be $150 instead of $50? So I'd like that number addressed as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Adam Goldston, resident of Manhattan Beach and a many-year master's swim participant. First of all, thank you, council, for prioritizing a new pool. It's something that is obviously very needed. I'm sure you all walked through and seen the state of affairs at Beg Pool right now. It works. You can get in, you can swim, you can do flip turns. That's pretty much it. I also want to thank council. In my opinion, you guys are, are right on in terms of the questions. The devil is in the details here. There was a question about Bay Club. Let me just quickly read a couple of sentences from the internet. Backed by private equity giant KKR, Bay Club currently has 27 clubs on 10 campuses spread out across the West Coast. Membership at the end of 2024 was 135,000 members. This is a corporate BMF backed by private equity. The pressures, and I've worked for a private equity backed company, the pressures are enormous, both financially, leads to a lot of managerial turnover. I'm sure the people that we're hearing from tonight are, are very good at what they do and their jobs. But we really need to be very detailed in terms of what the program is going to be and what the people are going to be. Having Bay Club take over with all their people, you know, Jesus sitting right there, he's our Friday coach. There's other residents who are coaches, and I know a lot of the kids in town, the older kids in town are lifeguards there, are swim coaches there during the summer and whatnot. I would really urge council to shy away from not having control over programming and staffing. Thank you.
Any other members of the public in chambers that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none in chamber, are there anyone, is there anyone, Martha, on Zoom?
Yes, we have Michael Jenkins.
Mayor Lester, can you hear me?
We can. Please proceed.
Thank you. Council Mike Jenkins, thank you for bringing this item back, for discussion. Thank you for all of your questions. And the audience for all the questions I just heard from the members of the public. The city survey shows that there's a strong desire for a community pool, a world-class aquatic center in Manhattan Beach, and there's a demand for it. We should have a, a pool. We should have a state-of-the-art pool, no question about it. Beg Pool presents a lot of challenges, financial and logistical, and raises some complicated problems. We all know that. But I, I have some deep concerns about turning a public function over to a private company, especially over the long term. The gentleman who spoke before, before me mentioned pressures, financial pressures. And I think those are a great concern that, that we need to be worried about, financial pressures on a private company that we will end up having to pay for. That $15 cost, sure, it's prohibitive. It's unaffordable. It's being used to finance their capital costs. Absolutely, they're in this to make a profit. Somebody mentioned subsidizing that cost. Well, if the city subsidizes the residents' costs for using the pool, who's paying the subsidy? We are. We're the people, the taxpayers. We're ending up paying for it either way, whether we pay $15 a visit or whether we pay a subsidy through the city, being channeled through the city. It's the same thing. And the loss of control, relinquishing programming is a real concern. You guys have focused on it. I don't want to repeat all the questions you, you brought up, but we have a great city staff, a great recreation staff. They do a great job. And I, I don't, I don't see why we would take a public, a, a public function like this and let it be turned over to a private facility, a, a company. I, I don't really think this is necessarily a win-win, frankly. I think we're giving away a lot, and we're not getting a lot in return. So I think you ought to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jeannie Fratello.
Thank you, and thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members for bringing this item back. I feel like a little bit of a broken record on this, because I've commented on this a few times, but I, I am concerned about the idea of pricing in terms of a daily use fee. As we know, the $15 per day is a lot, is a lot more than what the other local outlets are charging, which is by the hour. And I'm looking through the Beg Pool current programming, and honestly, most of the programming is for an hour, whether it's lap swim, rec swim, water aerobics. I just don't see how people are going to use it for a day or get a day's worth of use out of it. And as I said earlier, a, a daily use fee seems to imply that you're going to get, like, if you're going to a health club and you get a day pass. So a day pass would imply that you're going to get access to other amenities, which you're not in this case. And so I think about, you know, for instance, a mom wants to take two kids for rec swim. Is that $45 worth of rec swim? No, I'd much rather go and pay, you know, $20 for three people at El Segundo. And so I guess what happens is, you know, the program, the, the plan can go forward, but I think if the market is going to speak, the market is going to speak. And so since there's not that much of a negligible distance between Manhattan Beach and El Segundo, for me, I would just as soon go to El Segundo, which is really well-run, and pay $7 an hour for a swim, rather than pay sort of an inflated price to something local. Even though, as you know, I'm always happy to support Manhattan Beach, and I want to do that whenever I can. And I appreciate the discussion, but I just think that the cost equation needs to be really worked out a little bit better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Lee Phillips.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, please, proceed.
Okay, I guess my question is, the location of the pool and parking, I don't know if that's been brought up before. Right now, what, what I'm seeing is that the apartment's planned at the connected building, and the building next to it is in use. And then the only place to park is along Parkview. And the country club parking gets pretty filled up, so the, the pool will be in the lower parking lot, and that pushes everybody out to Parkview. And I don't think there's enough parking. So I think that needs to be evaluated. How many people a day will go there? How would that impact parking lot along Parkview, and where would they park? And then I also like to consider noise. The soccer field goes pretty late, I think to 10 at night, and there's a lot of noise, whistles, lights, et cetera. And then how would that be, what would the impact of lights and noise be to the people who live in the village? Thank you.
Thank you. Any further commentators on Zoom?
There's no additional requests.
Great. Anyone else in council chambers that would like to speak on this item? Please, come on down.
Hi, my name's Richard Gronbach. I'm a resident for a very long time, Bay Club member for 30 years, and a county lifeguard, former county lifeguard swimmer for years. I agree with Adam. There's a big difference, and I think the devil is in the details, where they talk about $15. I've swum at all of the pools in the area, and we focus mostly on measuring Beg Pool between seven or $15, or three and $15, three and seven. Hawthorne, you can swim lap swims for three bucks. Wiseburn is seven bucks, $15. The question is not just the $15, but what are you buying for the $15? If I, as a Bay Club member, was told I can swim there, for example, can I swim the master's program? And is it really $15? Or is it at no additional cost, because I'm already a Bay Club member? Does the $15 just get you in the pool to, for free swim? Or is that swim lessons for my kid for $15? Is it the cost of the swim lesson plus the $15? So I agree with Adam, the, the devil really is in the details for the swimmers who understand the complexities of how the pricing really works. And while the Bay Club members may be able to swim there, it may not be that simple. It may be that they're going to have to pay extra for the master's program if you wanted to drop in and swim the master's program where you're normally at Beg, or I swim at Redondo, they have a master's program there. Can I just suddenly show up over here? Or is it an additional cost for that program as well? So thank you very much, and excellent questions by the council and by staff. It's a pleasure to watch. Thanks.
Any other members of the public care to be heard on this item in chambers? Seeing none, closed public comment? Council members, I see Councilmember Haworth, you would like to begin. Do you want to clarify exactly what our options are? Or do you have some general comments that you'd like to start?
No, sir, I leave that up to you. I do have a question, though. So I, I want to start with a question, and really, just a question before I have any comments. And I believe it's for staff. Is the intention, and so it's either Mark or Patty, Taleen, you guys fight amongst yourselves, but is the intention, if, if, let's say we were to go in, you know, have them do this and get into the details, et cetera, is the intention that we will no longer operate Beg Pool?
That's not what we communicated in the staff report. What we did communicate is that we can keep working on upgrades as our CIP permits and the funding permits on Beg Pool, but those upgrades, or I should say repairs, not upgrades, those repairs will extend the life for a few years, but we cannot guarantee how many years that will extend the useful life of Beg Pool. So there could be a certain point where we are no longer able to make repairs that would extend the lifeline of the pool. And so that, that would be a consideration for the council.
So, then just a couple of comments, and then I'll make more later. But, so we're not just, again, it's clarification, we're not saying, oh, we'll shut down Beg and, and they can operate this, and that's all we'll have. So that, that might, that might add to people's thoughts on this. And I, I want to say very strongly that we absolutely need to do a better job of providing an aquatic facility for this community. And I do not know if this is the answer. I don't think, I, I don't think it is the answer. It could be part of a solution. But, you know, I, I will express some frustration and disappointment that the school district recently, you know, went out for a $200 million bond with no plans to do anything to the pool, because for the public's, or clarification, the school district owns a swimming pool. The school district owns the land. So even though I have, you know, long been leading a charge for a pool, and you know I have, we don't get to make the decision on what happens there. And so I just want to throw that out there, that it's, I, I'm sorry, I appreciate this kind of, this creative idea. I do appreciate it, but I do think there are things to work out. But this would only be for me if we are to proceed with any sort of MOU with some details worked out that really do need to be worked out. We still need to have a long-term plan for a new pool, whether it's at Beg or somewhere else. So I just, I, I can't give up on that yet, but I have concerns.
Councilmember Shuva.
Thank you. Well-stated, Mayor Haworth. You, you took a lot of my questions. But I, I too wanted to confirm that, you know, Beg Pool's not going away, and we've heard that it's not. But it is near the end of life, and we all know that. And it is not on city property, it's on school district property. So at some point, we, we do need to take a look at it, whether the solution with the public-private partnership with Bay Club, or we need to come up with a, a plan for some type of aquatic center. And to me, we, we need to be doing that now. And maybe this part, type of partnership could work as a bridge to get us between point A and point B potentially. But those are just my initial comments. I will stop there.
So I'll go next, and I'll simply, again, reiterate thanks to the Bay Club for coming forward with this proposal, particularly because we found that we could not proceed to upgrade the Beg Pool or build what would be the sort of two-pool system for an aquatic center that our community would make greatest use fun, groups use for. My challenge is I share the concerns of many of the community. The devil's in the details, and we need to stress and focus on what our community needs are, even if ultimately we're not able to come to terms with the Bay Club. And that we have to go out for a request for proposal on our land and see what that cost would be. I'm not there yet, but I simply wanted to indicate, as opposed to looking a gift horse in the mouth and rejecting it, there might be enough issues here that prevent us from moving forward because of many of the comments that we've heard, which I, I share. Nonetheless, what I would propose for us to move forward with this item is to direct staff, and tell me if you would like a motion, direct staff to research further issues and seek conversations, further conversations with the Bay Club to see where there might be some agreement. Because they do have this offer that is presently before us. We've heard a willingness to continue to explore some of these issues, but there are increasingly coming into focus some, some red lines that are potentially going to be problematic, but staff needs some further direction. So I'm happy to maybe list some issues and see if staff, sorry, see if my colleagues want to add to those issues for staff to research and then report back, unless, the council colleagues would like something else, another way to go forward. Okay. So let me go through my notes, and then please add to this, and then confirm whether you would like a motion or just direction is sufficient if there's consensus. At a minimum, we need to explore the depth of the pool and better understand what it would take to get a deeper pool. Are we just rebuilding essentially Beg? Obviously, it'd be a little deeper, but we'd be limited in what its usages are at a different location. And is that really what we want to be putting our time and our money at this location?
Clarification.
Please, go ahead.
What do you mean? Are we just rebuilding Beg?
What I mean by that is, I know I would have concerns if we're just rebuilding a pool with limited usage at this location.
Okay.
And going through this entire effort when, in fact, we've identified other clear needs in our community. I'd like to further discuss with Bay the retention of our community programming. There's obviously liability issues that may well be what informs them in terms of their desire to use their own employees. But if community programming is important to us, how might we be able to integrate our community programming with their operation of the pool on our property? I'd like to better explore that. I want to better understand the length of the pool. What would be the maximum length that could be built in that space if it's one pool, even though we would love to build two? I think one pool, what's the maximum length? Better understand, particularly because I'm not sure if I saw seating there and other space beyond just the restrooms. There would need to be some form of changing room. We need to... would need to be some form of changing room. We need to look at different options at the outset, I think, about cost. Because to the extent that cost is going to be prohibitive for residents on more limited means, particularly some of the older adult community, as well as families, while I was originally thinking that this would be stuff we could talk about later, in fact, we need to address this at the front end. It was mentioned by staff, there could be some form of subsidy. We need to better understand what that looks like, particularly if there's going to be some investment in giving up, frankly, of this, of this real estate for a long-term use that we would lose, or not lose control of, but we would privatize. What else? We better understand the price point, and what happens if the price point is exceeded. There must be this parking study that's all been agreed to, but I think there needs to be more in the planning of a drop-off space and how we could get an additional parking supply at this location. By that, I mean, do we have to really think about some form of stack parking, a built structure there, which obviously would add to the cost, but I'd rather be talking about that at the front end. I could go on, but I want to not hog the microphone. Councilmember Tarnay.
I can just add to that list. I think one of the priorities, I mean, my main priority is making sure that this remains a community pool. I think that's what we're hearing from our community, is that we want to retain as much control as we can. I've had, my son has lifeguarded there. He still is on staff. My kids all swam at Beg Pool, JG's. My grandfather-in-law swims, he's in the Masters. So we are heavy, our family has been heavy utilizers of the pool, and it's wonderful because it is a community pool. And, and one of the things that my son always would comment on about the water aerobics classes and all the programming is, we do have a huge need. Every time there is a class or anything, everything is scheduled to, like, the second almost, because we have the need for it. So in hearing what we're, you know, all the, it's, to me, this is a balancing act. What are we willing to compromise in order to get a pool built that we are, we can't afford to build? And so, you know, I would like for us to continue to really put an emphasis on what is a community willing to give up? And if we're not willing to give up those things, then do we want to spend more time in pursuing this avenue? And I think that is all I have for now.
Mayor Protem Franklin.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor. I agree with everything on your list. I just want to make a few comments about them. Pools, the $15 fee, the same question, can it be subsidized? You know, in reality, that $7 fee should have been looked at, and I don't know what the answer is going to be the last time it was adjusted, but in today's economy, it's at least, got to be, let's assume it's got to be 10. And so, figure out that benchmark, and then we can figure out subsidies. We have good usage information from, from older adults who use the pool and the programming, so we can kind of extrapolate data there in terms of what a subsidy would look like. Because we definitely are being relieved of a lot of costs. I love pools. I don't love taking care of them. They are expensive, and they break, and a lot of people aren't happy. So we're, there's a lot of benefit to that. The six-foot depth, if there's any issue in terms of, you know, accommodating, it just breaks my heart about accommodating water polo. It's such a great sport to see and watch. And I know we have big advocates of it, but if it's going to create a problem, that should be, just a six-foot depth should be evaluated. The programming, very reluctant to give up control of programming. There is a lot of knowledge and experience and expertise that we have in our staff. I'd like to see maybe somewhere where we can work together with the Bay Club staff. Because, you know, I don't know how many older adults they have at the Bay Club, and what attention they focus on them. It's very family-oriented, I understand. Very kid-oriented, I understand. But we have to look after our older adults. So some sort of, you know, bilateral, you know, committee where everybody has a seat at the table, and they, and they pass ideas back and forth with some sort of oversight by the city to make sure that our residents' needs are being met. So some, something like that, if staff can look into. I've been trying to think of a, of an example we already have in the city, and I can't come up with it. So maybe it's like the pot, you know, the pottery, the kiln. I mean, I think we outsourced some expertise on that, but it's very much run by the Parks and Recreation. So, anyway, to, to look at that. The, we talked about the parking study, the funding. You know, we see by the polling from True North, a lot of people want these facilities, but, you know, it goes up to 71% that are reluctant to pay for it, or whatever, however, that's 71%. So it's like most of us, you know, we can't have everything we want, but let's try to get there. Let's find the happy medium. And if it's going to have our name on it, there has to be oversight by the city with the programming and the quality, is the bottom line. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Haworth.
Okay. So many things being said. And I think, so, first of all, you know, I think that it is really a creative offer coming from the Bay Club, and I know that, you know, they have worked on this for a while with staff. And that's, it's, it's an exciting, it's an opportunity. I'm very torn. And I think, I know, Mr. Mayor, you had a list of issues to work out. It got kind of long to me, and I think, I want to say there's like a few issues that are very, very clear. But before we even get to that, whether we're going to direct staff to kind of see if we can't get the Bay Club to agree to some of our kind of red lines, as you aptly call them, you know, one of the callers mentioned the private operation of a public function. And I think that's one of the more important things that we need to consider. I think Adam also brought up a really interesting point about economic pressures on a, on a public entity, which is one of the great distinctions we have in government, right? Our job is not to make profits for our shareholders, but our job is to serve the public. And it's not always efficient, and it's not always the prettiest, but that's what our job is. So, so I'm, I also see this as a really good opportunity, because as you mentioned, Mayor Protem, we need this, but people may not be willing to pay for it, you know, and to the level that we need it. Certainly not at the location it's at, where you have that horrible road and all of that. So I'd be willing to consider some sort of direction to staff if it's pretty focused, because I think what we're all saying, and, you know, maybe we're not, but we're saying, well, you know, I want to know why the depth can't be what it is, what we want it to be. I think we need to say, no, we want it to be six and a half feet deep, because that will serve a constituency. I think, I really hear, I hear a lot of concern about us being in charge of the programming or it being our programming. And I was a little bit agnostic on that, but I really hear it from the residents and my colleagues. So is it that it has to be their people, or could it be our people? But is it about who pays them? I don't understand. You know, I don't, what is the issue there? Is it a liability if it's our employees at their pool, right? Or is it that it just, for whatever reason, what is, what is the reason that we can't do the programming? The lane length, I'm not as concerned about. I personally, I disagree a little bit, Mr. Mayor. I don't think we're trying to rebuild Beg Pool, especially if there's two pools. And we're not trying to build anything, you know. Once again, this is the Bay Club saying, we're going to pay for this. They're still going to be giving us lease payments. They're going to do the construction costs. They're going to do all of this, you know, the operating costs. But what are the fail safes in an agreement if it, if the operating costs are higher? You know, what are the, where, if, this is not going to happen, because it's not, but if Bay Club goes under, what happens? You know, what, where, did they build it so they own it? Like, what's, obviously, that's not, that would be taken care of in a long-term lease discussion, but those things, that's, my direction to staff would be a little more focused about the depth and about the programming and the subsidies. And to the caller's point about, well, that's still residents paying the subsidy, because it's still taxpayer dollars. That is true. But also, if we, if it, if we, our budget overall is a bit unencumbered, more unencumbered, that's really not the right usage. If our budget gets a little bit of relief because we, the Bay Club is running this and paying for this, then we have some play with those funds that we would have been using to provide some of that programming at Beg. So, you know, I would want direct, so from my direction or my question to staff was be, what would a subsidy look like? Where would it come from? How does it play into what we're already providing? How do those two things work together, right? Because we can't just say, if we are providing programming at Beg, in addition to them, you know, then we do still have a cost. So the subsidized cost would have to come from somewhere. And where's that, you know, where's that? That doesn't just, that's just not sitting here. So I am torn. I'm appreciative. I want to be creative. I want to use, you know, capture opportunities, but there's some really, there's some big questions. And so, you know, programming, the depth, and the subsidy would be, if we go forward, I'd want to understand those.
In a moment, I'm going to circle back to staff to clarify what direction they need, but I see Councilmember Shervan has something to say.
Thank you. And I'm going to try to keep it short. So this, this potential pool, this second, this aquatic center, is in addition to, to our current pool. As, I keep hearing the word programming. These are going to be additional programs or equivalent to the programs that, that we provide. No one's going to replace the white glove treatment and hands-on that our city staff provides at Beg Pool. Know that firsthand. I got two littles. We spent most of the summer there. And Jesus Sandoval, who manages the pool, and that staff, does an incredible job for the city and our community. But this is in addition to. I look at this, this as an additional to. I am concerned about the $15, but I do know, as, you know, in the past, Parks and Rec does a master plan, and they go out and they survey, and we could ask Director Lehman. These are market-driven rates that they go out and compare our city to. And we heard a couple of different times that there's these, you know, other cities around us that charge equivalent to us or lesser than, than us. So, you know, I do think that, you know, these are, the $7, the $3 to $7 range is a comparable rate. And Director Lehman can let us know, you know, when the last time they looked at these, but I think they look at them pretty regularly. But I would like to look at, you know, listening to the community, that, you know, $15 is very rich, you know, three people, $45 per day. A lot of these programs should be an hour or two, and maybe we can come up with an hourly rate. And the caller that called and said, you know, if we subsidize this, yes, it's taxpayer money, that is correct. But we are going to also receive a lease payment from that location. Maybe we could build in, you know, a credit offset instead of calling it a subsidy. You can be creative. I heard Mayor Haworth say creative several times. So again, this is in addition to what we have. Beg Pool's not going away. It is end of life. It's been end of life for a long time. But I think, you know, what we, what we need to do is, you know, look at the survey and potentially find a solution. And this potentially could help us bridge that gap of not having any aquatics, because if we, you know, Beg Pool ends and we don't have anything, then, then we're going to have a bigger conversation.
All right. Let me turn to the city manager and ask, what further direction do you need? Do you need it more focused, or is it helpful to have the issues which I think we're all concerned about?
I think I would need the direction of, do I go with the longer list or the more focused list? And if we are going to go with a longer list, which would include everything, I do want some clarification on the, on the parking issue. Because if we want more information on how to resolve the parking matter, or how to potentially restripe the parking lot so that there's a drop-off zone, and can we capture any additional spaces, that requires hiring a consultant to prepare that evaluation. And as we mentioned in the staff report, the Bay Club did suggest that they would pay for that. So I would need to understand, is the direction to move forward with that study, or is there something simpler the council wanted us to come back with?
Why don't we try and break this down in pieces which are more specific? So I think with that first question, I looked to my colleagues, but I think there is interest in exploring a traffic parking study, excuse me, a parking study for that location, just to better understand what the potential need is. However, aren't we going to need to define the pool so we have a better understanding of what sort of draw might happen?
We are. That's what would dictate the demand.
I see colleagues want to speak, and we'll circle back.
Quick question. So Councilmember Shervan mentioned that subsidy could be offset by lease payment, but do we already get a lease payment from the Bay Club for that property?
We do, but we would renegotiate that lease based on the new use.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Okay, love. Thank you.
Councilmember Tarnay.
For just that portion, right? For just that portion of the land.
For whatever portion would be utilized for the new project.
Sorry.
I think before we go down the path of a traffic study, I mean, I think there are some questions that we need to answer. If it's a situation where we clearly want to retain control over our programming, how the pool time, and, and it's a no, it's a nonstarter for them, do we continue on, right? Or is there room for some flexibility at this point? And again, with the pool depth, if they aren't willing to build it to six and a half, do we proceed and put more time and money into this? So I think, you know, narrowing it down to those fundamental questions, what are we willing to give up? And what is Bay Club willing to, to give up? And if we can't come to terms with those points, then do we continue to have these conversations?
Councilmember Haworth?
Yeah.
Make a try for a motion, if that's what we're looking, that staff's looking for.
No, Councilmember Tarnay, why don't you make that motion? Because I, because I, for sure, you made that one. Well, the motion, I mean, go ahead, Councilmember, or Mayor Protem, what are you suggesting for your motion?
So I move that we institute a parking study for the facility, for the planned facility, based upon the scope that has been described in the document here. We also explore programming to see if there's an opportunity to work together with the Bay Club on creating that programming, monitoring that programming, and staffing that programming with both the Bay Club and the city staff. We don't have to talk about funding, because, and also do a study on, well, they've already come to us with the $15 fee. Is to see if there's some manner, first of all, to look at that, to potentially negotiate that, and then to find, to do a study on how that could be subsidized for older adults in the city. I'll take additions.
What about?
Depth. How about the depth?
Yeah, the depth.
I know you indicated your comment.
Six feet. Yeah, this is.
Would you be willing to at least direct staff to explore with the Bay Club a deeper pool?
Yeah, yeah. Now, is the six and a half feet, that's just a portion of the pool? It's not the whole pool, right? Okay. Yeah, so the, so the six and a half foot depth, do a study on that.
Well, if I may.
For the whole pool?
That's what Water Pool is, the whole pool. Because we've got two teams.
That's why Matthew Stevens was explaining that if you build a six and a half foot pool, it limits the other opportunities and programming that you could provide in that pool.
Right.
So I, I would recommend that we, if the council wants us to study that, it would be not just a study of why we can't do the six and a half foot pool, or how can you do the six and a half foot pool, but what are you giving up for that six and a half foot pool?
Right, sure. Yep.
I mean, that's important information, but.
That's good.
Councilmember Haworth, and then I might have some other.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, I mean.
I do. Do you do?
You're so nice. It's okay, you go. No, I'm going. No, I already pressed my button, man.
Let's go.
All right, sorry, sir. But I'm, you know, I don't want to say, go ahead with the parking study until we know if we can, more about the, the programming and the depth. And so, I, I appreciate, like, I, I, 100%, I would absolutely want to do a parking study, but I want to know what we can, you know, what their, their red lines, they have to have red lines too, what their red lines are on programming and the depth. And, and I appreciate what you said, City Manager, about, well, we'd be giving, they'd be giving up, and we'd be giving up some programming opportunities, but so I, I, I won't, I can't support this motion because I want to know those things first before I would, and so I'd want to come back sooner so that, yes, they say this, or no, they say that, and then, so that's why I wouldn't be supporting it, but appreciate it.
Okay, Councilmember Sherrill.
Yes, really quick, if I can add, if we can, I know you said delve into the, to the fees, but if we have an hourly option.
Hourly options.
Hourly option instead of a, and then the only other, I, only other thing I would add is the timeline for this to come back, some kind of, you know, end game as far as when, when it needs to come back.
Okay. So, I, I think we can discuss that with Bay Club and see what they say about an hourly option.
So, I have a proposal. You are the maker of the motion, so I defer to you. I'm hearing concerns about the parking study, and they are well-founded because we don't know how large of a pool is going to be built. We don't know the red lines, and perhaps we need to have that understanding with the Bay Club. First, to better understand if this is really going to work, in which case, to the timeline concerns, maybe if it's just a negotiation, we can request that this come back.
Yes.
What would be a period of time when this initial discussion can come back?
I, I would have to also check what's on the agendas because we do have some busy agendas coming up, but I would say two months.
Okay. Do you?
Two months.
So, are you accepting the removal for now of the parking study, return in two months, exploration of a fee, hourly fee, is that right? Sorry, did you want to say?
Well, the, did you say removal of the parking?
He did.
For now.
I think that's key, it's key to the, to so much.
So, while I share your concern, because I'm eager to explore whether this is feasible here and what's involved.
Yeah, I have a substitute motion.
The, and then I want to defer you.
Okay.
Because the scope of this facility is still under discussion, that's why I was willing to defer it. But I, I hear a request for a substitute motion?
Yeah, for that very reason. And I would say the substitute motion would be to direct staff to enter into discussion with Bay Club regarding the programming concerns we have, the depth concerns that we have, and how a subsidy could work, whether it's hourly, whether it's for seniors, maybe it's families too, or how that, and where it comes from. Bring that back to us with the understanding that then we will have a better understanding of what those options are, and then we could go forward with the parking study.
Okay.
Okay?
I agree with that.
I'm trying to get on board, but let me just make sure that we are not missing anything unintentionally. So, there was discussion about the fee, the flexibility. I heard from Councilor Sherrill an exploration of an hourly fee.
Within the subsidy. I don't want to be so prescriptive.
And you, you said depth. We talked about programming.
Yeah.
Preserving the community. My only question, note to myself, was just better understanding the operational administration here, because we are talking about some type of hybrid under the auspices of the Bay Club, yet we're trying to retain our community program.
I'll accept it.
So, what does that look like?
Okay.
In which case, I would support. Any other council discussions? If not, call for the question.
Did you have a question, Mr. City Attorney?
It was second.
Oh.
Councilman, Mayor Proton. I have a substitute.
Push the side. That's okay. No, it's all good.
It was teamwork.
Motion passes 5-0.
In, in which case, it is now 8:15. We'll take maybe a short break before we go on to the next item, item number eight. Stand and recess.
Oh, racy.
All right.
Call back to order. Let's wait to go live.
Can we go live?
Thank you. We'll call back to order our city council meeting of September 2, 2025, and we'll proceed now with item number eight, consideration of management strategies associated with Canada Goose, or is it Canadian geese, at Polywog Park and adjacent sports fields.
Mayor Lesser and council members, thank you. Good evening. My name is Ted Saman. I'm your interim public works director. I've got a couple of folks here that are going to be helping me. First, it's Sean Roberts. He is our public works field operations manager. And also joining us is Robert Hamilton. He is the biologist that helped put a study on how to build these strategies. And with that, I will turn it over to Sean for the presentation.
Hello and good evening, honorable mayor and members of the council. My name is Sean Roberts. I'm your field operations manager in public works department. Tonight, we're going to be discussing the Polywog Park Canada Goose sanitation strategy. And it could be geese when it is in plural form, yes. So first off, we've got a little background on Polywog Park. It's 18 acres of urban wilderness, 1.2 acre pond. The land is owned by the Manhattan Beach Unified School District. The city does maintain the property, and that could be, you know, with the landscaping, the lighting, the trees, and then the events that Parks and Recs offers as far as event space rentals in the, in the gazebos. Supports a diverse range of local flora and fauna, just a lot of different plant species, trees, bushes, and other thing. It is primarily known as a retention basin during rainy periods of the season. Right. The history of the Canada goose. Through the 1970s, Canada goose was purely a winter visitor. Now it resides in MB year round. Polywog Park provides a year round habitat for a variety of water birds such as Canada geese, mallards, domestic ducks, and American coots. American coots are the small little black ones that run around. Up to 95, Canada geese have been recorded at Polywog Park at one time. The Canada goose can live upwards to 24 years. They approximately 12 pounds in weight, and the staggering number here is they can consume four pounds of grass per day and create about three pounds of fecal matter. Times 80 birds a day, times a week, times a month. You could do the math on the amount of fecal matter. The sanitation strategy here, there is concerns. The disease concerns is one. There's a lot of bacterial, you know, offsets from the fecal matter. It could be E. coli. It could be, I think I read in Robert's report, a swimmer's itch type condition that you can get from this. Most notably, too, is the unkept appearance. This is in the state of unkept. We do pressure wash this area twice a week. But you can pressure wash it at 9:00 a.m. and come back at 3:00 p.m., and it looks like we didn't do a thing. And, you know, it also, it is, it decreases the user experience for not only the residents, but the parkgoers, the dogs. This fecal matter is not only located just on the walking trails, but this is pretty much all throughout the park, in the grass areas, the gazebos, the brand new playground facility that we have built. So it's everywhere. As I said, we increased our pressure washing from once a week to twice a week. We do this every Tuesday and Friday. Each application or each time we do this operation, it takes between two and a half, three and a half hours. As I said before, it is quickly loaded back up with this fecal matter within, you know, hours each day. So we do get reports. It looks unclean. Why don't you clean it? It's like, yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. We just cleaned at 9:00 a.m. this morning. So it is a constant challenge that we are battling with. So what we've done in the past, it's a little over a year now, contracted with Robert Hamilton, who created this wonderful report and provided multiple management strategies to help us deal with the Canada goose issue. Recommendation number one, we did do a comprehensive public outreach at our Heights Park. We had members of the community join in, offer their, you know, recommendations or suggestions or ideas. Robert's recommendation number one is to reduce the food opportunities, educational information on the city webpage, getting that out to residents and to the community, and also getting a city ordinance prohibiting feeding of the wildlife. Secondment recommendation was to establish a low barrier fence, which is about three to four feet in height to basically incorporate around the walking path of the pond. This could be chain link. It could be something a little more aesthetically pleasing. But it does recommend a three to four foot height. That just kind of inhibits the flight path and the ease of access for the Canada goose. Third recommendation is hazing with green lasers. As you can see in the, in the report, you know, this is one of the recommendations that, that would have to be a constant measure of application. This just isn't a one and done. This would be an ongoing effort to chase them out of their areas and get them uncomfortable and have them leave the water estuaries and, and their surroundings. The fourth recommendation would be population control. And this is known as addling of the eggs. Basically, this would be a professional that would have to come in. They humanly addle by oiling, removing from the nest, or replacing with dummy eggs. Again, this would be a level of effort that we would have to contract with a professional, and this would be a several year endeavor to see any, you know, tangible results. And then number five, make nearby sporting fields or sport fields less attractive. This could be goose repellent, heavy top dressing of sand, and then again incorporating in the hazing with the lasers. As you know, being from Manhattan Beach, we have almost the perfect scenario for a food source for these birds. We've got Beg Field, which is right, you know, above the pond. We have Premier Field. We have MBMS Sports Field that's right next door. Heights Field is just across the MBB. And as a crow flies, you go two blocks to the sports complex where it has three softball fields, and then you go over to Marine Avenue Park with another large field. So, you know, by making it less enticing to the goose, this repellent would be sprayed on. It is meant to basically make the grass not so desirable, whether it's stomach issues or just the taste in general. I believe it's derived, one of the ingredients is from grape skins. So you might get a little bit of smell of grape with that. But this is, you know, the fifth recommendation that we'd have to do, not at only Polywog Park, but the surrounding playing fields that we have in the city. So tonight, staff recommends that the city council is interested in pursuing one or a collaboration of strategies identified herein. The city council shall direct staff to evaluate the impacts of that collective strategy on staff resources as well as budget. Thank you.
Thank you, council members. Council member Howard.
Yes, thank you. Just a question. Have we observed people, I mean, have we observed people feeding the geese? Is that, is that really attracting more, do we think?
There have been instances, yes, where people have identified.
It's pretty common.
Yes.
Yeah, probably with the kids and bread, right? Like I was, yeah, it's not, it's, thank you. Nothing more. Sorry.
Mayor Protam Franklin.
Yes, thank you. The things you learn. So the, the laser hazing, is that allowed by PETA or any other animal protection kind of group? Is it a?
Yeah, Mayor Protam, it's an approved technique by the Humane Society. So it is, you're not, you're not putting in their eyes or anything. You're, you're actually doing it at their feet to just make them less comfortable, and they will, they will fly away.
Okay, now you gotta ask if it got into the eyes, because those are pretty powerful.
Yeah, no, they have to be trained, trained personnel not putting it in anyone's eyes, because they are powerful.
Okay. And do they nest at night? I mean, do they go into the shrubbery and nest and sleep at night?
I presume at the backside of Polywog Park in that, in that natural area, I would presume there's nests in there. I see young out on the pond that were produced somewhere locally. At that public meeting, people were also saying there's, there's a nearby area as well where they also, not in the park, but where they also are thought to nest.
Tend to aggregate, okay. And then how about the, the spray on the grass? Since it is sports and our children are playing out there, is it, it's not toxic to the kids?
No, it's not toxic, but it is, it's something that would have to be repeated. It wears off. So it's, it's a cost, and it's a repeated cost.
But even if they're like rolling around the grass and everything, it doesn't, it gets in their eyes, or?
No, it's not. It's approved for human use.
Okay. Does it work on teenagers?
No, the lasers do though.
Lasers do that. And, and the feeding enforcement, do we actually have an ordinance yet? I mean?
No, there's nothing on the books here.
No? So it's just a suggestion, that sign?
Well, the suggestion, that was from talking, I talked to rangers at other parks that have the same problem. And one of them was very adamant that, he said, you know, some people are just, they will not, no matter how much you ask them not to.
Right.
They just insist. So it's not a first choice, but he said, unless you have something to back it up to say, oh, you're just gonna get a citation then.
So city attorney Barrow, I mean, is that something, have you, have we heard of, don't feed the geese or wildlife? Because it applies to the turtles too, right?
Yeah, it'd be any wildlife, the mallards, the coots.
Yeah.
You can feed the turtles. Just kidding.
Yeah, I've heard the concept, but I've never seen an ordinance. But if that's the council direction, we could look at our other cities and see if they have such an ordinance that we can borrow the language.
Okay, thank you.
Council member Tony.
Thank you. I just have a few follow up questions. When, when the water pressuring takes place, all that runoff, does it just run into the pond and, and then onto the grass if you're hosing there?
Right. Past practice may have. We do our best to mitigate as much as we can before it enters into the pond. We've utilized, we have a vacuum machine. It's like a, a mini street sweeper, if you will. It has 100 gallons of fresh water, and it has 100 gallons of reclamation, I guess, or reclaim capability. That operation takes about three to four hours. So it's, it basically goes and sweeps and sprays and sucks up all of the, the fecal matter. We did reach out to one contractor, duty calls. And that, that is their claim to fame is to pick up fecal matter either from dogs or birds or, you know, at a twice a week service for them, it was about $42,000 a year. If they were to do it three times per week, that would be a cost of close to $50,000 per year just to pick up the excrement and fecal matter. Still would need to be cleaned and sprayed and reclaimed that way.
And we do that.
Yes.
Thank you. And then with regards to the repellent spray, how often does that have to be done? And approximately, how much would that cost?
I'm not actually familiar with.
Oh, oh.
Sorry. Yeah, I'm not familiar with the actual routine for that.
Thank you. And then just one more. And then as, with respect to the hazing program, what does that look like as far as how frequently is staff, you know, patrolling the area with green laser?
It'd be multiple times per week, probably early in the morning before there's a lot of people around. So it's not a big scene. But yeah, I would, I would think multiple times per week at dawn or between six and seven or something like that.
Thank you.
Councilor Shurian.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, I've, I've seen the, the sweet, street sweeper kind of go through, the little cleaner that you mentioned. But I do also have concerns of it somewhat making it into the pond. Have we measured the level of toxicity that's potentially in the pond during this process of, at any given one time, or, or can we?
I'm not an expert in this field, but I know the outfalls, and Gil Gamba could correct me, I believe goes out, the 28th Street downfall from that pumping station. And that is measured frequently by Friends of the Bay and whatever organizations measure toxicity levels in the bay.
My other question was the fencing. Is there a cost related? Obviously, there's a cost with that. Have we looked at that at all or not?
I believe we have. Chris, you remember? Sixteen? $16,000 roughly.
But that's, that, I mean, there'll be different options. That's probably like for maybe the chain link fence or something.
Correct.
And then the, my last question is, natural predators. Do the geese have natural predators? I mean, you've seen around town, people have owls and things, you know, fake owls and things out and about to help deter, you know, deter instead of the, the hazing. Is that, do they have natural predators? Is that something we can do?
Well, they do. Coyotes are natural predators, but.
Sorry.
And they, they do sell fake coyotes, like decoy coyotes, but they, they're not gonna work unless there's some actual lethality. The birds figure it out pretty fast. So there's, there's no simple, like, you know.
So they have no other predators that, that?
No, not really. I mean, not, not in our area.
Okay.
They're big, they're big birds.
Great. Thank you. I want to clarify what direction is being sought tonight. Is it to try all of these strategies at once? Is it to try them in a progressive manner from least invasive to, to most invasive? What direction are you seeking, other than obviously, we need to try any number of measures?
Thank you, mayor. I think what we wanted to do is to bring back this item to the council, because you did ask us to come back with some potential strategies. As we've talked to Mr. Hamilton, as our staff researched the other options, we wanted to bring them to you and say, these are recommended strategies. You can try one, you can try none. We are going to continue to do the cleaning that you've asked us to do in the manner that we have. You can choose some of these options, pick and choose. We've also learned from other agencies, and thank you for one of the articles that you sent over this morning, that, as Mr. Hamilton said, these geese are smart. They learn. You can't throw everything at them at once, because if they do, they start to, they start to acclimate to the, to the changed environment. You know, trying one or more of these strategies, that's great. We were out this afternoon looking at the pond. The fencing idea is a strategy. Is it going to stop them? Are they going to find beans in and around that? They can actually fly if they choose to. And, you know, even a four foot fence, they can fly over it if they need it to do so. Is it going to distract and dissuade the normal movement in and out of the pond? Probably, but it's really not going to stop them. So it's just a matter of attempting and trying and to determine how significant is it to try to deter the use, the geese from walking in and out of the walkway or other parts of the park?
Yoder Kali forwarded concern Foster City, which has faced a similar sort of challenge. And what their experience had been is that some of the strategies that are posed for here did not work. And what they're now resorting to, I guess, has to do with a drone that looks like a, I think it's a peregrine, some sort of.
It's a falcon.
Falcon. And so I wanted to ask our expert, to what extent is that something we should be looking at right off the bat, picking up on council member Shurian's question of some sort of predatory species?
Yeah, I reviewed that article you sent over, and I also downloaded Foster City's entire plan that they released last month. As it mentioned in the article, they have a $430,000 budget. They're also located right on the edge of San Francisco Bay. It's a big sprawling city that has slews and lakes going through it. It's not one pond with, with a series of nearby fields. So they're, they're looking at a very different environment than we are. So, I mean, with, with alumnus, a half a million. environment than we are. So, I mean, with, with a half a million dollar budget and a full-time biologist, and their, their basic strategy is border collies. So they're gonna have border collies. And I went, I, I sent the staff my review of that plan. It's border collies, it's, it's the lasers, it's, it's all the other things we're talking about, plus, you know, helium balloons and floating things in the water and drones, as you say, drones with noises, drones with lights. So maybe they will get rid of the geese, but it's gonna be at a real cost to the human experience. And, and they're also gonna be, they're going to be doing it all at once. I know he said, you know, if one thing's not working, we're gonna, we're gonna change it up and do something else. But this is gonna be starting with the dogs and then building. So I think it gave kind of a false impression that, that they're just gonna do one thing at a time.
So let me ask maybe the opposite question. Have you found these strategies to be successful in other communities that you study?
Well, they are successful to the extent that they reduce the problem. They're not going to eliminate it. You know, I spoke with the, the, the city of Irvine has a lot of lakes with turf nearby. And so they have the same issues and that, that's, they, they were the ones that told me about, you know, doing the heavy sand dressing, using the goose repellent. But, you know, they said they have a, a full-time person on, on staff to just deal with this issue. So it's, it's not gonna be simple. And I think the goal would be to, to reduce it to a manageable level.
Great, thank you.
And I do think that the, the fence around the lake and possibly something on the backside of the, of the path too, to just make it less, because right now you have the turtles, you have the, the ducks, everything can just kind of step up onto that place and just hang out and sunbathe. So I think that the more you make it difficult for them to do that, I think that, that area will stay a lot cleaner.
Helpful, thank you. Councilmember, before we take public comment?
Yeah, you can stay up, because I do have a question. And I was going to, I was gonna ask the question in a slightly different way, one of your questions, which is, I think I saw in the recommendations, or in some, somewhere that you, you employ it, it's, it's not just choosing one. I mean, and it, it may be, I think that my understanding would be if we decide to go with some sort of mitigating strategy, we give staff the ability to try this, then move to this, et cetera. So it wouldn't be just one, it might be two at a time or whatnot. But my question would be, and it's really, that shirt's very unfortunate. I just wanna say, go Bucks.
So forgive me, I just dropped my son off last week.
No, that's wonderful. Truly congratulate him. It's a great school. You still seem to be very well-versed in an expert size too. You have lots of credibility. But anyway, they know me. The, the turtles. So when you mentioned the fencing, you know, and in the report, you could do, you know, some sort of shrubbery that makes it so that the geese can't get through too, I think. Will the turtles be stuck? Will they be able to access, can the turtles, can the turtles get into the pond and out, or?
Well, I mean, I think you wanna keep them more off the concrete and more, the more natural edges around the other side.
Because the turtles, we're not, the turtles are not going to be impacted by whatever. I guess that would be my.
There'll, there'll still be plenty of turtles, but, I mean, the turtles also defecate on the, on the concrete.
Oh, news to me. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further council questions? If not, thank you, gentlemen, and we'll open this item up for public comment. Anybody in council chambers care to comment on this item?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thanks for that report. I thought it was really interesting, and I did learn a lot. I can't believe Canadian geese are that way. But at home, back at home in New York, we have a park near us, and it's called Goose Poop Farm. So I'm not exactly shocked. But one of the things that they did to help mitigate the areas where the geese could go, rather than putting an unattractive fence, was to put shrubbery, like even water shrubbery that could be in that area so that it's a barrier that can grow to, you know, two or three feet, even four, if you really wanted it to be. But it's a, it's a different way, a more natural way to provide some barrier between the spaces.
Thank you. Any other members of the public care to address this item in chambers? Seeing none, is there anybody on Zoom that would care to chirp in?
No requests on Zoom.
Thank you. In which case we'll close public comment. Counsel?
Yeah.
Councilmember Howarth.
I, I don't, I don't have a opinion on which one of these we should try, because I'm not the biologist. And I, I appreciate my colleagues' questions about environmental impacts, or, you know, will it harm the kids, you know, and stuff like that. That's all very good. But we definitely have to do something. I'm not, I, I thought that, I saw the article that you sent around as well. It's, was it in the New York Times about Foster City? And I appreciate the biologist's comments. Foster City is much bigger and it's right on water. And so it's a huge, it's a huge kind of biological area. So I want to assure citizens, we're not talking about appropriating $500,000 here for noisy hawk-shaped drones, et cetera. But I think we need to move forward with all of this. I'm not sure if, if we should. I think what we would, what I would say to move forward with is directing staff to come back with some costs, but to proceed and, you know, and continue to clean. I think this is something that's here with us. And I also have a big dog who's happy to go chase him.
I see other council members who want to speak, but do you want to make that as a motion, just to keep this?
Yeah.
Walk in? Okay, I'll second it, just to keep it going. That's fine. Mayor Protem Franklin.
Yes. Oh, boy. And we're gonna talk about we move to, to accept, but.
Or not.
I think we should do the ordinance. I have no idea what kind of fine it should be, but we really gotta get it through to people. You cannot feed these animals. First of all, what you're feeding them is probably unhealthy, which, you know, could solve the problem. But when I saw those numbers on eating four pounds a day and whatever, three pounds a day. I mean, that's beyond comprehension, times 100. And it's unbelievable. Those that get the citation may be community service. Community service is cleaning up the park or doing the laser thing or something like that. I, I know kids would go crazy with that laser, but I wouldn't put it in their hands, because they'd be doing it to people and things like that. But I don't even know how you would contract for the laser. I think, I think we should try at least two of these things. Well, three, if you count the ordinance. The ordinance with some enforcement, maybe our dear scouts would make a project of this. It's not the sexiest thing, but somewhere we can get somebody there talking about the harm that they're doing. We could put up storyboards, you know, about, about the geese, just public information and get it out of people's head that, don't bring your half a loaf of bread and feed these. First of all, they're very mean too, right? Aren't they kind of mean? They'll snap that, you know, the food out of your hand and stuff like that. So ordinance, enforcement, laser, and if it's not too expensive, the, at least experiment with the goose repellent. You know, I, I can't remember what you said about the cost on that, but just do two or three of those things, and let's see where we stand, come back three minutes later.
And if I could clarify the motion, like, I would, I would accept all of those, maybe not the adling of the eggs. And so then we have, so if we're, you know, then staff, get the cost for those things that he mentioned.
Yeah. If I could, I, I see Councilmember Tornay pushed her button, but I wanted to clarify with staff, if I could, very quickly. Does staff want a broader direction? Because this is a growing problem, regardless of whether people are feeding these, these birds. In fact, they're growing exponentially. And I'm just wondering if, if the recommendation is to have the opportunity to pursue these various strategies to try and get a handle on this as soon as possible. So I'm wondering if we're perhaps undermining our efforts to really contain them by limiting how many measures we can move forward, particularly given that we have very full council meeting agendas going forward.
I think we would appreciate if there is something the council doesn't want us to pursue the cost for, like the eggs. For example, if we're not going after costing the egg option, then we can focus on the other options and come back with that. Or if the council doesn't want someone walking around with lasers, then we would take that off the list and we would come back with the costing for the other options. So I think it's wise to keep multiple options on the table. But if there's something the council is averse to entirely, we would take that off.
Councilmember Tornay.
I would support all the options we've discussed and remove population control until we've exhausted all of our measures. So let's take that off the list for now. The other thing I, I think we should add to this is, and I know that Mayor Protem wants to go to the ordinance and fees, and I think that's fine, but education and maybe incorporating the, the lessons at the elementary schools and the middle school and even the high school, because the middle schoolers are running through that park and they're running through all that geese poop. So I, I think if we could educate them as well, that would be helpful. So, but that's my suggestion.
I'll withdraw my comments.
Do you want me to go first?
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I like some of these ideas I've heard. I really like the option of the, some type of fence with foliage there to give it a more natural habitat and not an eyesore of a fence. But I think we have an opportunity here for some low-hanging fruit with respect to the signs.
Yeah.
I think, I don't know, again, if, you know, a motion maker would, would allow, but, and my colleagues would jump in, but, you know, we can put these signs out relatively inexpensive. It's gonna come back in, in a future meeting, but let's get the signs out. We're talking about education. I heard education, like this is, this is like, you know, we lived through the smoking ban, we're still living through it. It's a picture and it's no smoking, it's universal, it's crossed out, not too much wording. It's, you know, don't feed the geese. So that's the only thing I would add, like everything else I hear. I'm not a huge fan of the laser, but I'll go along.
Let me restate. I, I agree with adding the signs, and I think those can, you know, in terms of education, we have to be careful because we can't, the schools aren't, don't take like curriculum to, you know, we could go to an assembly maybe, but let's be careful what we're suggesting, you know?
Even just a flyer?
Sure.
Or some minor.
Yeah, flyer to all the things. But I, but I think the signs are a great idea. So my motion would be, and hopefully Mayor Protem still seconds it, that we pursue an ordinance, signs, fencing, goose repellent, and I think lasers, because that would be limited to our staff doing it. And it's usually early morning hours, right? Isn't that when you use the lasers? So it wouldn't be out there, people wouldn't be out there. So that, come back and give us a cost, but let's start pursuing. We have to, you know, definitely put the signs out now, but we wanna hit this. So that's my motion.
Let me seek clarification. And there was a reference to some form of barrier or a fence.
I said that, yeah.
I didn't hear that. Okay. Any other council questions or comments? If not, I see that is a motion by Councilmember Howarth. Is that still seconded by you, Mayor Protem?
Yeah.
Okay, call for the question.
Thank you.
Take a gander.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. We now move on to item number nine. This is consideration of a request from the Oceanic Teaching Stations Incorporated, OTS, for the city to contribute annual funding for the next three years in the amount of $110,000 for the Roundhouse Aquarium support, as well as provide direction to staff.
Well, thank you, Mayor Lesser. Michael Codron, your interim community development director. And the city did receive the funding request. Your environmental programs administrator, Brittany Cokermon, has been dealing with OTS directly, and so she has a report for you, and then will be available to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the city council. As Michael said, my name is Brittany Cokermon. I'm the environmental programs administrator. So I'm here this evening to present to you in response to a request to discuss potential funding options for the Roundhouse Aquarium. So I'll start with some background. The Oceanic Oceanographic Teaching Stations, that I'll refer to as OTS, is a nonprofit entity with a goal of teaching students and visitors about marine life and the environment. And they have operated the Roundhouse Aquarium at the Roundhouse Building on the end of our pier since 1980. In 2018, the Roundhouse Aquarium underwent a significant renovation and expansion into the second floor, which prompted amendments to the operating agreement between the aquarium and the city. The amended agreement specified that interior maintenance and repairs for the aquarium would be continued to be provided by OTS, and the current agreement does not specify payment of maintenance or repairs. The initial term of this agreement is in effect until July 31, 2028. Upon after time, both parties are subject to the clause in the agreement for termination. Since the renovation and expansion in 2018, the aquarium has served more than 1.1 million guests and students. This graph you see up here is specifically for last year, 2024. They served over 243,000 guests and visitors, 91% of which were not tied to student field trips. So as you can see, many of these visitors came from outside of our city and outside of the South Bay, including the nearby Los Angeles and Orange Counties, the remainder of California, out of the state, and even out of the country. These visitors contribute to the Manhattan Beach economy, shopping, dining, and visiting all of our nearby businesses in our downtown district. The aquarium does not charge admission fees and operates on a donation-based system. The aquarium receives approximately 78% of its revenues from private donors, relying heavily on donors like Skechers and the Harrison Greenberg Foundation, and most notably, the foundation's Splash Gala fundraiser. OTS is projecting a negative cash flow of about $85,000 for their fiscal year 2025, 2026, in consideration that there will not be a Splash Gala fundraiser next year. This projected negative cash flow also does not account for potential equipment replacement costs. Over the past three years, the aquarium has experienced rising operating costs and has spent approximately over $389,000 on equipment maintenance, repairs, and replacements. According to OTS, these costs can fluctuate year to year and have ranged in previous years from as low as $60,000 to as high as $249,000 per year. This fluctuation is largely due to the unpredictability of operating a facility located in a marine environment such as the Roundhouse Aquarium on the end of our pier. Situated at the end of the pier, the aquarium is exposed to continuous saltwater, wind, and weather impacts and challenges. Again, as a nonprofit entity that does not charge admission fees, they are not able to recover these costs simply by raising prices, as many other businesses are able to do in trying times. While their fundraising efforts continue, OTS is requesting support from the city to ensure the aquarium remains safe and functional. OTS is requesting funds specifically to support the ongoing maintenance, repairs, and equipment replacements that are necessary to safeguard the marine exhibits and ensure that the aquarium remains a valued public resource. OTS is requesting a total of $110,000 every year for the next three years, broken down as follows. A $30,000 for annual maintenance of the aquarium's interior, $40,000 for annual tank and life support system maintenance, and $40,000 to contribute one-third of an annual reserve for the replacement of tanks, life support systems, and displays. As the city council recently adopted fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget, there is not funding currently available in the budget, and this request can only be funded by the undesignated general fund balance, which at the time of publishing this report was just over $621,000. Alternatively, the city council could select to consider the request during the mid-year budget review or during the 26, 27 budget adoption process. Staff also explored additional funding sources, including the state pier fund. However, it is recommended that state pier, state pier funds be retained in case significant structural needs are determined after the completion of the pending structural inspection and condition assessment of the pier that's currently underway. After this inspection and assessment, staff will have a clearer understanding of the pier's condition and any funding needs for any rehabilitation or capital projects needed. As it relates to OTS's request, state pier funds may only be used for building care and maintenance, which excludes the tank, life support system, and display repairs, maintenance, and replacements. So in conclusion, we've identified four alternatives for your consideration this evening, the first being to fund the request in whole or in part from the undesigned. first being to fund the request in whole or in part from the undesignated general fund balance. If this option is selected, the city council shall also specify the amount and the term. Second alternative, to direct staff to bring the request forward as part of the city's mid-year budget review. Included in this direction, what if any other information the city council may require to facilitate a decision on the amount and duration of funding upon mid-year budget review. Alternative three, defer the decision to the FY '26-'27 budget adoption process, at which point city council may reconsider the request based on the availability of funds. Or option four, deny the request. If the city council does appropriate funds for OTS maintenance and repairs, if at any time, the city council shall also direct staff to amend the current agreement and correspond with and memorialize the decision. Thank you. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you.
We also, I failed to mention, I apologize, we do also have representatives from OTS and the aquarium with us this evening to answer your questions.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. Councilmembers, any questions? Slow roll. Mayor Protem Franklin.
Yes. Thank you very much, and thanks to the OTS. It's been great over the decades, and it's a source of pride and absolute joy, you know, as we see the kids go to it, and even the adults. The thing that I'd really like to know is, admission's not charged, right? Okay. I didn't see any information here about the results of your fundraising, how much comes from where, who's paying it, who, you know, who's a contributor? I don't know. Can we get some of that information? It doesn't have to be like right now, but if you have some just general information, like how much does the county, you know, donate? How much does, you know, how much do the businesses donate? You know, things like that. Do you have any kind of numbers like that?
I don't. We can get that, and they can address that during their public comment from OTS as well.
Okay. I mean, have you been asking? You know, you got a very robust board. I'm sure their, probably their number one task is fundraising. We see the $85,000 shortfall, but we don't know what caused that. Okay? So it just, you know, this is public money you're asking for. We got to have accountability for that. Okay? Have you ever considered charging admission?
Is that to our staff member, or maybe to the OTS representatives when they come forward? When they come forward, maybe we can ask them.
Oh, okay. Same thing on the number of LA County and South Bay visitors, you know, that'll probably repeat. Based upon the graph, it looks like it's about maybe 120,000 a year, you know, are from local. I think you do. Don't you take some sort of 200,000?
225.
225. Do I hear 250? 250. Thank you, Richard, who got 25,000 people to come in. Okay. So is it, has it, okay, so 225,000. Okay, I think that's all I have for now.
Right. Councilmember Tarnay.
Thank you. I just have a quick question. I understand next year there's no Splash fundraiser. Is that primarily the cause for the shortfall for that calendar year?
To my understanding, based on the letter that was provided by OTS, yes. If not, I'm sure they can clarify further on that.
And then do you know if there are plans going forward in 2027? Will there be a fundraiser? And you can answer this when we have a representative up there, but is this something that is typically done every other year, the gala? Okay, thank you.
Brittany, I'm pleased and proud to have served on the subcommittee, along with Councilmember Howarth, for the remodeling of the Roundhouse in 2017-18. And my concern, though, are fiscal, and this projects a three-year commitment. Has there been discussion with OTS about what happens after the three years?
There has not, no.
I have other fiscal comments and questions, but I'll wait till comments. Councilmember Howarth?
Yeah, I have a, maybe it's a comment question. I think that it would be appropriate, I mean, to get the financial statements or their annual report, you know, so that, I think it's only responsible for us to see that as we, you know, if we decide to contribute, which I think there are reasons that we should, and I, but I do think it would be only responsible that we would review that. I mean, that makes sense to me. Before I get into other comments after public comments, I also want to comment that tonight is our interim community director, Michael Codren's, last night, our last meeting, so presenting to council. And I wanted to call that out because you have been an incredible interim and added so much value, been a big part of our parking lot discussion and everything else, and I'm very grateful. So I wanted to mention that. And you're wonderful too, Brittany, but you're staying.
Going anywhere.
Good, good. That's good.
Any further questions?
No, but I just, so I know that there are going to be members of the OTS board standing up, and so be sure to address some of the concerns when you do, because I think that's important. Thank you.
Any other council member questions? Seeing none, we'll open this item up to public comment. The members of the public in chambers, carry who address this item.
Good evening. My name is Dick Bruin. I'm going to make some initial comments and then turn it over to others on the board. And I think I'm here in part because the Roundhouse Aquarium is now 45 years old. It started as a collaboration of six individuals that didn't know each other, and they became the founders, and I was a founder. I've been on the board for 45 years. After the city failed to find a business use for the Roundhouse, we got a call, I got a call from the mayor, I think it was John Cashin, and he said, he says, "Okay, we'll try it as an aquarium. It's yours. I just have two comments." He said, "Keep it clean, keep it locked." And from that, we developed the aquarium, and our biggest concern was right away, how do you raise money to support a facility? It was an empty building. And support a staff and support, and find specimens. As a matter of fact, initially, we got some tanks, and we used to put a picture of a fish on a fish line, and we would say, "When we get money, we'll fill this tank with water and specimens." So our initial way of doing that was to sell classes. And we entered into a contract with the Los Angeles County Office of Education, and they brought classes there. And that's still the ideal model, but educational institutions don't have any money anymore. So we're in the process, and have continually been in the process, of soliciting donations from foundations and corporations and individuals to pay for the classes and bus transportation to bring the students to the Roundhouse. So where are we now? Well, we've created...
Can I give you 30 seconds more? Can you?
30 seconds more. Okay, well, we've created the Roundhouse. You couldn't do it now because the labor statutes have changed, so you couldn't hire independent contractors to run the Roundhouse anymore. So I think we did our job, and I think that we built something that the city is proud of, and we hope to continue it.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Lesser, and members of the council. My name is Yellal Cone. I'm currently the chair of the board of the Roundhouse, and I would like to answer some of the questions which you just raised with staff. First, I'd like to point out that we view ourselves as a public asset. We're part of the city, part of the downtown experience for people who come to Manhattan Beach. We do accept the public coming in free of charge. It's always been free of charge. That's been part of our philosophy, because we want people who are at the beach or are downtown to feel like they can come into the aquarium. We don't want them to have to feel they have to pay to enter the aquarium. And I also think, I'd have to double check, but I also think it's part of our contract with the city that we will not charge the public, because part of the charge from the state to the city is that we should operate the Roundhouse in a manner which is accessible to the general public and minimizes any interference with the public's access to all parts of the pier and the Roundhouse. So I don't think charging the public is something we would envision as a path to help us gain more funds. We are, however, constantly fundraising as part of our DNA, as I'm sure you understand. We are always looking for new funding. We're happy to share with you all the sources of funding we have. I only have the top-line numbers from last year here. But just to give you a quick example, about $300,000 last year came in the form of restricted grants from corporations and foundations, which means it can only be used for specified programs. It can't be used for maintenance, for repair, which is one of the reasons we're coming to the city, hoping that you can help us with that fundamental task, which keeps the aquarium safe and attractive to members of the public, so that they will continue to visit it and have an enjoyable and educational experience.
I'd be happy to answer any further questions you might have.
Thank you.
Hello, and thanks for having us here. My name's Owen Murray, and I'm the treasurer. And you're asking some tough questions there, Mr. Franklin. I'll try to address them. Roughly, our budget's roughly a million bucks, okay? There's about 730,000 bucks paying our employees, okay? Our cost each year, that's roughly, I'm saying that's our cost. Our revenue's somewhere between 900,000 and 1.1 million. That's splash events and every other year event. If we had it every year, it would dwindle in what it could raise. So you can't have an art auction every year, because everyone's walls will fill up, you know. So doing it every other year has been a good cadence for that. Sure, we could do some other things in the off years, but we're going back to a lot of the same people, ask them for money, and that's why we're here. Okay? Our budget, when I say our expenses, those are our operating costs. I'm an accountant, but, we're looking for a little help on our depreciation. You see that wave underneath our Roundhouse out there? If you hang out out there, that's not like being in a building somewhere. You're basically on a boat almost. You're out there, stuff that should last 10 years lasts two years. So we're depreciating our assets the way you're supposed to, over five, 10, 15 years, and our depreciation expense per year, that's what we're saying is around 120,000 dollars for the things that matter most in there. We'll cover two-thirds. We're asking you for a third, and we're asking you to cover some of our maintenance. The maintenance goes all over the place because things go wrong out there. Things are, and we're getting it under control, but we're always going to be, you know, fixing things. That's what we're looking for help for. Okay? I can answer any of your questions. We're happy to show you all our numbers. We're happy to show you where our money comes from. But a lot of it's public records. Okay?
Thank you.
Could I ask him a quick question?
I'll ask a question.
Just a quick, quick question. You said it, and I was busy writing something else. What is, you said your revenue is between 900,000 and 1.1, and what did you say your expenses were?
Roughly a million bucks.
Okay.
The revenues go in, are fundraising, the splash events, somewhere near, say, a quarter million dollars.
Okay.
In profit.
No, but the expenses...
The expenses, yes.
Are a million a year?
Roughly, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public care to speak on this item in chambers?
Good evening, again. Thank you for your dedication to giving Manhattan Beach such an iconic place for not just residents, but also visitors. And I truly appreciate that visitors want to come to Manhattan Beach because of the aquarium. They get to the beach and they're like, whoa. I've had a lot of people who come visit us, stay with us throughout the year, and they say, you know, "We got to go to that thing at the end of the pier. That looks really cool." So I raised my children here. They've been going, now they're 29 and 31 years old, so ever since they were babies, they've been going there. And it's just the place to be. I think it is incumbent upon Manhattan Beach to do a service to the residents and the visitors of this community. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other members of the public in chambers that care to address this item? Seeing none on Zoom, Martha?
No requests on Zoom.
In which case I will close public comment. Council. Councilmember Tarnay.
Thank you to the OTS team, by the way. You guys bring such a tremendous asset to our city. I think everybody that I've taken to the pier, when people come and visit, they think the city actually runs the aquarium. They can't believe that. It's a huge undertaking, and so I know it's a huge benefit to our community, to all of our visitors. I've seen the bus, I've seen the kids come through. My kids have come through in, for all the classroom field trips there. So it is definitely a huge asset. It's a crowning jewel of our community. So I think it's incumbent upon us as a city to figure out a way to support, to support your programming. So now, the question for me is, what can we afford to do? So I'm, you know, looking for those answers, and I know that right now, we're not budgeted for that. We can, I'd love to find an interim solution and then look forward. And I know that this is a temporary three-year plan, and so we can have a discussion on that and how we continue to move forward, so that we continue to work with you to protect a great asset.
Councilmember Howarth, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the OTS, the board, to Grace, to Mr. Bruin for getting in there and building it at the, back in the day, because I know you did that too. You know, it really struck me when you were talking about, you know, the cost of maintenance, how high that is, because it's being slammed by waves all the time. And I think it really makes sense, the way you structured the ask, that like, look, this, and obviously budgets are fungible, but the fact that, you know, maintenance and deferred maintenance and all of that, it kind of makes sense for the city to take that on, as I believe Rita said, it is a public asset. I mean, it is the icon of our town. You know, if you, if there's an image that says Manhattan Beach, it's that pier, and people do assume it's the city's. I know, as the mayor said, we were on a subcommittee when it was being built, and, you know, we, there was a lot of restraint on our part because we said, "We're worried that we will get saddled with upkeep," we're worried that we will get saddled with additional maintenance fees. And when we said, "We did." And, you know, so I, I understand why I was concerned, we were concerned about that then, and things that have changed for me just is understanding just what a part of our, the fabric of our shoreline, of our coast, of our city that this is, that it really does feel like it's a bargain for us, right? It's a bargain to have, it is a draw, it is a bargain, it is a loved symbol. So I want to find a way to support it. And my question to my colleagues is, when? You know, do we wait for the mid-year budget, and do, you know, do it then? Do we, and also, by the way, whatever we do, we would enter into some MOU, and I would want the, you know, financials. I mean, and obviously, I know you're not hiding anything, so that's fine, but we need to be aware of that as we go forward. And I do appreciate that there's no fee, right? I'm not going to sit here and say, "No, you should charge a dollar." Oh, great. No, it is one of the most, it really represents old Manhattan Beach, if you will, or old, all of our childhoods, when there were still things you could do for free. So with much love and appreciation, I want to support it. So I just ask my colleagues, let's, how do we, how do we want to structure that, if you all want to do that as well?
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Shu.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to, you know, jump on with my colleagues. I appreciate the dedication of the board. You know, I've heard iconic in the past. This is our central iconic location. I've heard that it's our Statue of Liberty. I mean, people... I mean, people remember, and I see it in, you know, commercials and marketing all across the nation, so it is an incredible place. But again, you know, there's the ongoing challenge of the maintenance piece. I think that's, to me, that's the most important item that I'm looking at it from the request side. We can talk about how we want to approach that, but I guess from my perspective, it is, it's generally tri-jurisdictional down there because you have the state pier, yeah, the pier's state, the bike path is county, and then the rest is Manhattan Beach. So I guess it's maybe, maybe a finance question or public works as to how much money we have in our state pier fund in the CIP. We just increased those parking meters, was it 350? Was it $3, 350? From 250 to 350, so, you know, there's going to be definitely, was it $3, City Manager? 350.
Do I hear 350?
I knew it was 250 when I left.
250 to 350, that's what I bet.
Yeah.
250 to 350.
Hi, good evening. Libby Brett, our finance director, just wanted to clarify, the pier parking lots were increased to $3.50 cents per hour.
Perfect, so I, yeah, if you could hang out for, no, not right there, but just, I guess my question is, is there a solution that, you know, we know we have an immediate request for funds, and I think we can potentially help get there, but in the, in looking at it longer term, could we utilize those funds that, you know, are specifically for the use of the pier for building these in and, you know, potentially in the future? So just being, again, I'm going with my strengths in the sense of understanding where, where the funds are, and those are specific funds to the pier and upkeep and maintenance. Yes, you know, I know we're going to do a pier study for the structure, but, you know, we just infuse those funds with a lot more money that potentially we can, we can utilize those funds in the, in the future, but.
As a source.
Yeah, yeah. My, my comment is that I, I support, like, it's a case by case, year by year, I support the maintenance portion of their, their request for this year, but outside of that, I'm, I'm open to dialogue.
For my comments, I would simply echo what has already been said. I've been, was very proud to have participated on the remodeling project, both as council member in the subcommittee and also a part of the private pitches for fundraising, to raise the money that allowed for the renovation that we now see. As council member Howard indicated, the issue of ongoing maintenance and operating costs is not something that comes out of the blue. It's something we did discuss back at the time because we, as a city, were concerned about what the cost could mean to us as a city to the extent that we were building a more ambitious project there. I would like to explore supporting what is an icon for our community, but it has to be fiscally responsible. It has to tie into our budgetary process. We cannot go off budget, I'm quite firm on that, because there are so many unmet needs and challenges that we see on the horizon. Many capital costs, as staff indicated in their staff report, there is concern about what the latest structural assessment of the pier itself is going to entail to be able to address that maintenance issue. So I think we have to be very careful before committing funds from our pier fund to the Roundhouse until we know more and have this assessment. So I do break it down, as suggested, into what is an interim solution. I think it would start at the mid-year budget process to understand what we could do on a short-term basis, and perhaps it's not the full ask, particularly because a portion of the ask is to help build a reserve for the OTS, which is understandable. But for us and our standpoint, for assistance with some of the maintenance responsibilities, let's see where our budgets are come mid-year, and then we need to integrate this into our fiscal year budget. Because I had asked the question of, what is the long-term plan? Once we start with our support based on all of the articulated comments we've discussed here tonight, how does the OTS go back to just seeking its own fundraising, given the anticipated needs that they're going to have beyond three years? So that would be my general direction. I see other council members want to speak. Mayor Portman Franklin.
Yes, thank you. I too echo everything that my colleagues have said up here. It's such an integral part of our families, the charm of what you see here. I wish we could get a royalty from all these shows, all these sports, you know, when, when they're playing in the Rams or, you know, at SoFi, what do they do? They send their drones over the, over the Roundhouse, and so we should tap these networks for some money, because it is such a beautiful, beautiful sight. Look, the effort to make the, what it is today was incredible. It, you know, we have to thank all the donors that have donated money. We have to thank the Greenberg family for stepping up and, and helping and for the Harris Greenberg, I'm sorry, right, Harris?
Harrison.
Yeah, Harrison. Greenberg Foundation, and, and all the corporate donors to make it what it is today. I'd like to echo with how we have to go through our budgeting process. It just concerns me, you know, if you've read the report, this would have to be funded through our undesignated general fund, the balance of which is $621,000. So committing that either in segments of three, you know, $110,000, I mean, that's a significant portion of that, of that fund, and we don't know if that's going to grow, you know, or diminish over time. I, I think there has to be serious consideration of charging the public. Perhaps it's not mandatory, mandatory, but it, people literally buy into it, you know, they, they enjoy it. That's why I asked a question about the number of visitors just from LA County. I mean, 220,000 a year, I mean, 50 cents a head, but probably, you know, whatever that amount is, it's not going to be onerous, I don't think, for a family of five to, and, and I find what people, all you got to do is ask, oh, really, there's a charge? Fine, happy to do it, for the most part. It's so important what it does, that, to see the looks on those children when they're walking down the pier all excited, and they have their lunches with them and things like that, and they go through the, you know, they go through the aquarium, and then they go down on the beach, and for many, it's their first time being on the beach. So, you know, we want to have that, we want to make it successful. I think if we're all in it, everybody that uses it goes ahead and contributes a little bit, and so that we can face these challenges, you know, as they come up, and help with your fundraising. I think people wouldn't mind about that. So part of the solution I would like to see is just to look at that, is to explore what would it take to go ahead and charge admission, okay? And otherwise, I support looking at it and seeing what fits best with our, with our budget.
Great, thank you, Mayor Portman. Counsel member Howard.
Yeah, I'm going to try to find a way, a way forward tonight. I know, I appreciate the various indications of support, and I also appreciate, Mr. Mayor, your commitment to process, commitment to the budget process, you know, your fiscal restraint and focus is duly noted and appreciated. So, and I, and I want to say something that I, I mentioned before, that you and I were on the subcommittee, and we knew that when we redid it, and it was, for those, well, all of us in this room know, it was quite a renovation, right? It was a big deal. But whether we had, and again, thanks to Michael and his family, but even if we hadn't, even if they hadn't approached us and we hadn't done that major renovation, they would still be facing this need for maintenance, or for funding. I mean, it's just, that was, it actually, at the time, I know, correct me if I'm wrong, and I hope you will, the Roundhouse was looking for, the board was looking for funding for the roof, for some cameras, stuff like that, and then Michael Greenberg came in and said, well, let's do all of that, right? So I just, I just wanted to separate that out, maybe just for my own self. But so here's what I want to propose, and I, I want to make it an ongoing commitment. I mean, I am committed to, to pursuing this on an annual basis or a tri-annual basis, et cetera. But right now, I think, I'm wondering if my colleagues who are a little concerned would be open to allocating a $70,000 amount that, you know, really kind of covers the maintenance portion. And this is, this is a thing now, and then at the mid-year or in the next budget process, we can discuss the ongoing of 110 or 120, you know, include the other things and maybe make it a three-year term, but for now, it would be a one-time amount of 70,000 for maintenance, and that would, that's, I'm wondering if you all would support that.
Counsel member Shurin.
Thank you, and that kind of goes along my comments earlier about the maintenance portion of the, this request at this point in time. But I, I too appreciate what the mayor said about this going through the budget process. I'm, I'm as fiscally responsible as anyone here, as my, as the former finance director, so I totally understand, and I appreciate that very much. A lot of times we, we do these one-offs. You know, we did something a little similar not too long ago and supported the marine mammals.
That's right.
Outside of our budget, but this particular, there is an opportunity here to be strategic in structural analysis. I appreciate what you said, Mayor, but that might, we might not see that come back for 12, 14 months. Maybe the city engineer can, can help us out and tell us when that might come back. But I think there's an immediate need for something that we all consider, and we heard it here again, it's, it's an incredible Roundhouse, we're very fortunate to have it, so I think the upkeep and maintenance, you know, I think we, we need to kind of step in and help out with that, but I look to the finance department to be strategic in finding potentially an alternative funding source right now instead of the undesignated fund, to look at other opportunities, or look in the CIP fund. We're a couple of months into the CIP budget that we approved, that there's potentially some monies in there that we, we may have not be utilizing, so I look at that. I don't want to use the general fund if I can avoid it, but I think we can because we increased those parking rates by 40%, and that brought a cash infusion into that, that fund. I think that was it.
So I remain concerned still about going off budget now. We've, at the last meeting, or was it the meeting before, we came up with, was it a $20,000 or $30,000 expenditure for a holiday road closure? We have made the commitment for the mammals, we're eating into our general fund reserve folks. This is why we have a mid-year budget discussion, this is why we have a fiscal year budget, this is why we have a budget. So to the extent there is an urgent need by the Roundhouse related to its ongoing maintenance, perhaps what we would need, which is a little bit different than what has been proposed here, is a very specific reference to where they're short and for what item, and then we can maybe evaluate that if that's an urgent funding request, which I would hope would be less than the amount that has been suggested by a fair margin. I remain concerned about off-budget expenditures accepted in an emergency. Counsel member turning.
Thank you, Mayor. I have concerns about budget constraints as well, and, and it would be helpful to see a list of kind of what the urgent needs are so that we can formalize, we can come up with a concrete number, but I would be willing, I'm supportive, and then I would like for this to be a part of the budgeting process so that we can look at everything, because we do have so many budget needs, and we have so many programs that are going to, infrastructure needs that are going to be coming down the pipeline, so that would be my input.
Thank you. Counsel member Shurin.
Yeah, and again, I too would want to see this through the budget process, but I think, and I do want to know what's the sense of urgency right now that the OTS needs to get us through the, to the next budget process, which will start in probably January or February shortly here. So that being said, again, I think we can strategically find a way not to use our general fund. There's specific funds for this particular location that we can tap into. The only other, I have a question for the OTS. I frequent, I frequent there, I got two littles, and we, we're in there probably once a week, and, you know, the, the donation box that you have there, is there an opportunity, because not too many people have cash anymore, is there an opportunity to, is there like?
Crypto?
Is there a tap, like, is there, is there, can you put, like, different boxes in different locations with different signs so you could kind of capture, you know, the attention? I'm just saying, like, there's an opportunity, I'm not saying charge, I'm not, I'm against that, but as far as the donations, like, is there an opportunity, because everybody's on tap pay, it's like nobody really has cash anymore, but.
Right, right. We have had a, both a tap and a cash jar donation opportunity for visitors. We do inform visitors that there's a donation jar, and we appreciate any donation. Historically, we've gotten between, last three years, between $60,000 and $80,000 a year.
Wow.
In the donation jar. So it's not insignificant, and it's all voluntary, but at the same time, it's a very small amount in terms of our million-dollar operating budget.
Got you. Maybe put one upstairs or put one.
That's a great idea, I like the idea.
Just spread it out, because if people are walking around, they might have missed that, it's like, oh, look at this, another picture, just market the heck out of it, you can probably get another 10, 20 grand.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Thank you.
Counsel member Howard.
All right, so I want to try to figure out, like, a way forward here. And, and Mayor, I wanted to clarify something with you. You said you wanted to see the more specific.
I do.
Okay, so if, and I'm just clarifying though, but you still want that to come with the mid-year budget process, correct, or?
If there's an urgent need, what I'm looking at is there are three aspects to the current request that gets them to 110. It's the estimated amount of annual maintenance, it's the estimate annual tank and life support system, and then one-third of the annual reserve for replacement of tanks, life support systems going forward. So you're looking at a short-term tranche, and then something that we can integrate into our budget, if I understood your earlier comments.
Yeah, I mean, my 70,000 came from the 30 and 40 of the first two options, right? Without them having to say, here's, here's the, an urgent need of 25,725 plus this plus that, so I was just, and not with me spitballing, right? But I just, I want to figure out, so that we're clear with staff, so that we're clear with the OTS, do we, do we need something more back to us? Do we need to wait till the mid-year budget? I'm more comfortable saying, you know, whatever. I'm sure, look for other sources of it, always, to Councilmember Trillian's point, but I'm just looking to my colleagues, because I, I felt like you were saying, the rest of you were saying mid-year budget, so is that what you're, I think if we, and maybe we need to ask the OTS, you know, is there something, are they going to have to shut their doors or, because it's not safe? So if someone could get up, if someone could get up, stand up. And, sorry.
Certainly, let me clarify, there is not an urgent need. We're not going to closing our doors. There's nothing that's breaking today that we can't afford to fix.
That's.
So what we're trying to do is build a long-term strategy that enables us to maintain the aquarium on a sustainable basis into the future.
Thank you.
And that becomes particularly important because of the fact that we have historically been so dependent on Skechers and HGF, and nobody knows what the future's going to be in terms of that relationship. We'll certainly try to maintain a great relationship there, but it's, it's just not something we can control.
Okay, that's so helpful, and that's, thank you. So here, so, so that is helpful because now we could direct staff to, and, you know, work with the OTS, come back to us with their financials, we want to discuss this at the mid-year budget, and then we can talk about three-year, we can talk, we'll.
Make a motion, I'll second it.
Okay, done. So.
Any further counsel discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the question.
Was that clear?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
Just wanted to say we all were fighting to be the second on that.
Motion passes, 5-0.
And I want to thank all members of the OTS, including our former colleague, which Montgomery is here tonight. Thank you for your involvement, your support for this institution, which is so important to our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She made a half.
Thank you. In which case, we'll now move on to item number 10, and I'm just noting the time, it's 10 of 10, and we still have a few items left. Item number 10 is consideration and introduction of an ordinance to amend Title IX of the Manhattan Beach Municipal Code related to construction regulations and California Code of Regulations titled 20. Title 24.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor Lesser. And this is the last item that I'll present to the city council. And so it's been a great honor. And without further ado, I'll ask Ryan Heiss, who's the building official for community development, to come up and present an item about protecting neighborhoods from construction impacts. And we have a series of recommendations for you to consider.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, Ryan Heiss, building official. I'm here tonight to present proposed amendments to Title IX of the Manhattan Beach Municipal Code related to construction regulations and local amendments to the California Code of Regulations, Title 24, also known as the Building Code. To clarify, this is not the triennial adoption of the state building code. That code adoption process occurs once every three years and will occur later this year at two regularly scheduled council meetings. Look forward to seeing you all there. Tonight, at the direction of the city council, during previous study sessions, options for amendments to the Manhattan Beach Municipal Code have been provided to lessen the impact of large construction projects on the surrounding neighborhood. Staff from multiple divisions and departments have researched specific requirements for Manhattan Beach. Some have been required on previous discretionary projects or others that further enhance existing construction rules implemented by previous city councils. Also, amendments are proposed that codify existing city policies. By adopting an ordinance for any recommended municipal code amendments, clear direction on code requirements will be provided to all developers planning future projects. At the conclusion of tonight's city council discussion on municipal code amendments, staff recommends that the city council introduce an ordinance with any required modifications and set a second reading and adoption for September 6 regularly scheduled council meeting. I will now present a summary of each optional amendment provided in the staff report. Option one, require a Phase One environmental assessment on projects larger than specific sizes or heights, as well as specific previous uses. Staff has provided recommendation thresholds for city council review. Option two, expand the construction management parking plan requirement to all commercially zoned properties in the city. Currently, they are required on properties in Area Disks III and IV, which is generally the coastal area. Option three, add Juneteenth to the list of existing 11 construction holidays. This is not an existing construction holiday for the immediately adjacent cities. However, Beverly Hills and Long Beach do restrict construction on Juneteenth. Option four, require the construction management parking plan to be posted on a job site fence. This is existing city policy, but has not been previously codified. Option five, require construction sound barriers between residential projects and projects larger or taller than a specific size. Staff has provided recommended thresholds for city council review. Option six, require a thicker wall conduit or other non-prolusive conduit type for all exterior conduit due to the salt air. This is a longstanding city policy that has not been previously codified. Option seven, return the definition of major addition to the California Building Code to address large-scale addition remodel projects. And this was omitted in error during the last triennial adoption cycle. I know I went through those very quickly and I'm, obviously, we can go through any of them in more detail, but I wanted to open up for council member questions and comments. And staff is available to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions at this time? Councilmember Howard.
Yeah. How does the idea come about to add Juneteenth to the list of construction holidays? Was that, is that something residents wanted or builders wanted or?
Sure. So as you know, I'm also in charge of code enforcement and we do hear complaints about construction activity, you know, disrupting quality of life. We have a very large amount of construction in the city. And so sometimes people ask for additional days of noise.
Noise abatement. Okay. All right. Was there any?
Councilmember Howard, may I ask in that response? I also wanted to highlight for the council that the council recently gave employees Juneteenth off, which means we don't have inspectors or code enforcement officers working on that day.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
So it would be impossible for us to monitor any construction on that day as well.
Okay. And I have another question. What about, so somebody calls and says, I have a problem. They're, they're out there at 7:00 in the morning and you come out and you give them a fine? Like, like, how does it work? If I call and my neighbors are building, not you, but somebody comes out and gives a fine? Or possibly?
So code enforcement has a proactive early-morning patrol and we also do respond to complaints for early-morning construction. Typical code enforcement procedures, you know, typically start with education. We've performed education previously about construction hours. So it's typically a notice of violation or administrative citation for early-morning construction.
And I, and I ask this because we received an email and I've spoken to other residents about these developers or construction management companies that have repeat violations. Is there any disincentive for that kind of behavior? Or is there any consequence if you get, you know, 10 violations in a year of just blowing off our codes? Like, is there any consequence?
So the administrative citation does typically escalate to $1,000 and it can be cited daily. We have cited multiple times for early-morning construction and $1,000 for each violation, I know, sounds minimal, but does add up quickly.
Yeah. And I, it's for other violations too. But that, I just was curious that that was asked, so thank you.
Any other council member questions at this time? If not, we'll open this item up for public comment. Anyone in council chambers who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one at this time, Martha, is there anybody on Zoom?
No request on Zoom.
Again, anyone else in council chambers? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. I see that there is a motion by Mayor Potem Franklin and the motion is?
The motion is to consider recommended option.
No, that's a prior amendment, it's legacy.
10.
Is it?
That one.
Is it here?
Yes, correct.
Right? So can, consider and consideration introduction of an ordinance to amend Title IX of the Manhattan Beach Municipal Code related to construction regulations and California Code of Regulations Title 24. Consider recommended options for amending Title IX. Introduce ordinance number 25-008 and adopt resolution number 25-0112.
With the recommendations, with the recommendations that staff has presented.
Yeah.
And I see that it has been seconded by Councilmember Sherillian.
There's two clarifications. I'll read the title number one. The resolution will come back at second reading.
Right.
Ordinance number 25-0008, an ordinance of the city of Manhattan Beach, adopting certain deletions, additions, and amendments to Title IX, building regulations of the Manhattan Beach Municipal Code.
Very good. Call for the question.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
So that will come back on the, in two weeks, along with the resolution for your consideration.
Thank you. Councilmembers, shall I continue? Any objections? Let's do it. Item number 11, consideration of appointment of the Parking and Public Improvements Commission seat number four, our city clerk, Lisa Tumara.
Thank you. Lisa Tumara, city clerk. Now, this item is to appoint to a vacant PPIC seat. Deputy City Clerk Brianna Contreras will provide a brief presentation and will guide the council in the voting process.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Brianna Contreras, deputy city clerk. On August 7, the city clerk's office received an email of resignation from Commissioner Bala regarding seat number four, which is designated as a member-at-large seat. From the remaining applicants from the January 2025 interview pool, 22 applicants had previously expressed interest in serving. As of last Wednesday's staff report, I'd like to note two changes, two changes since then. Saleem Ahmed has withdrawn their application and Joseph Melville has confirmed their continued interest. In front of you is a list of 22 applicants who have expressed their interest in the member-at-large seat. That concludes my presentation. Before we begin the appointment process, staff is available if you have any questions.
Counsel, any questions for staff?
Yeah, could you just confirm who withdrew their name?
Yeah, so Saleem Ahmed.
Okay. None of them on here. It's removed. Oh, thank you. Okay.
And also just confirm who did express interest. Was that Joseph?
Joseph Melville, yes.
Great, thank you.
Just one, can you confirm the beginning and ending of this term?
Yes, of course. So the appoint, commissioner appointed will begin today, September 2, 2025, and the term expires on May 31, 2028.
Thank you.
Well, before we begin, I'll just make a comment. Once again, we're faced with this challenge of riches. And that is to say, we have multiple extremely qualified applicants and it's difficult to choose because they all bring something different, whether they're retired professional engineers, traffic, with traffic experience, whether they're attorneys who've worked in this field, whether they're former commissioners. All of them have enormous qualifications. I don't know. Mayor Potem, do you think we would have been appointed to the Parking and Public Improvements Commission with this sort of group of contenders back when we were appointed years ago?
You know, I deal in reality.
Yeah.
I did get elected.
But in any event, thank you to all those that applied. This is extremely difficult. But with that, if there are no further questions, I'll turn it over to our city clerk.
Public comments?
Sorry?
Public comments?
So public comments before we make this election? Is that the recommendation? In which case, are there any public comments? In the chamber? Seeing none, are there any public comments on Zoom?
No request.
Thank you. In which case, I will close public comment and thank you for that prompt, Madam City Clerk. In which case, you may proceed.
Perfect. So we'll go ahead and begin the appointment process. For nominations, we'll begin with Councilmember Tarnay.
And just to clarify, we want us to articulate why we're making the nomination as part of the process? We don't have to. Okay. I'd like to nominate Stefan Kompay.
Okay. Councilmember Sherillian.
Thank you. And before I give my selection, I too want to just thank everyone for, it's just been an incredible process and a very talented poll and it's very difficult, but thank you for wanting to provide public service. I nominate Dan Higgins.
Councilmember Howard.
Stefan Kompay.
Mayor Potem Franklin.
Joseph Melville.
And Mayor Lesser.
Gary Scalabrine.
Okay. And with that, we have Dan Higgins, Stefan Kampa, Joseph Melville, and Gary Scalabrine moving on to round one. And we'll begin with Councilmember Sherillian.
Higgins and Kompay.
Councilmember Howard.
Kompay.
Mayor Potem Franklin.
You got two, right?
You could, yeah.
Yeah. So Joseph Melville and Richard Farber?
No. Because he wasn't nominated the first time.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
So we have, yeah, so we have Dan Higgins.
Yeah, Dan Higgins. Dan Higgins, yeah.
Mayor Lesser.
Gary Scalabrine and Stefan Kompay.
And Councilmember Tarnay.
Kompay and Higgins.
So we have Dan Higgins and Stefan Kampa moving on to round two. We'll begin with Councilmember Howard.
Kompay.
Mayor Potem Franklin.
Kampa.
Mayor Lesser.
Stefan Kompay.
Councilmember Tarnay.
Stefan Kompay.
And Councilmember Sherillian.
Let's see. Stefan Kompay.
And with that, we have Stefan Kampa will be appointed to the Parking and Public Improvements Commission seat number four.
Congratulations. And I'm quite sure he will attend as he is a regular attendee.
And we'll miss you attending here.
Well, he will still.
Okay. So now we move on to council member requests and reports, including AV 1234 reports. Can we start with city council AV 1234 reports? Are there any 1234 reports? Don't believe there are. Seeing none. And we move on to item number 13, which is a request by me and Councilmember Tarnay to discuss the exploration of additional space options for older adults programming, including potential staff costs. We're just, if I'm correct, Mr. City Attorney, we're looking just for a third vote or we can further articulate it.
I'll third it.
Councilmember Howard is the third vote. Questions? We'll move on to item number 14, which is consideration of a request by Councilmember Howard and me to direct the city traffic engineer to evaluate traffic mitigation options for Second Street per the city's neighborhood traffic management program.
I'll be the third.
Mayor Potem Franklin is the third. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on to future agenda items.
Yes, Mayor. May I? So I'd like to explore closing the upper pier lots earlier to prevent nuisance, nuisance, noise, and graffiti and other things that are happening up there. And it's, it's now open 24 hours a day and just would like to explore closing it earlier so that we can mitigate those kind of issues.
I'll second it.
Okay, mentioned, seconded by Councilmember Sherillian. Any other proposed future agenda items?
Mayor, I don't, it's not a future agenda item, but, you know, we go through the, this three-step process and then, you know, we wait for the report to come back. Is there any way to get something from the city manager that we can see where these are in process of coming back to council? Because sometimes, we used to have something in the forecast in the back where it kind of used to line up a year's past, but it's really kind of difficult because I feel like once they drop off, like you.
So two things. One, I recall that Councilmember Howard had proposed a review of the three-step process, but with regard to a record, could be beyond the agenda forecast? Is that what you're asking for?
I guess like.
Or some places.
Someplace that we can track when these are coming back.
Why don't we add it?
They get lost once we do with, like, once we go through the three-step process.
Let me ask our city manager if she has a comment or a suggestion.
I'm going to defer to our city clerk who has a response.
Thank you. Lisa Tumara, city clerk. We do have that on the agenda forecast. Those forecasts are provided to council and to city staff. Those are for drafts. And then the final is, excuse me, included in the packet. But to what you're referring to, the back page, that's part of what we provide. It just doesn't look the same.
Got you. But that's part of, those are the three-step processes and it tells you when we, when council asks the third step and then it gives a date.
Yeah.
And then you can kind of track as to, the date was four months ago and kind of.
So in every agenda packet is the agenda forecast tab.
Great, okay.
It just doesn't look like the color document.
It doesn't look the same. I got you.
Oh.
Thank you.
Any other future agenda items? Go on to our city manager report.
None this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that long, prolific report. Our city attorney report.
Nothing tonight.
In which case, there are informational items on our agenda. No further closed session. Our adjournment.